Okay. All right. All right, everyone, I call the City Council meeting to order, March 12th, 2012. And we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance, and it's gonna be led by Girl Scout troops of the Diamond Crest Service Units.
Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, we are going to have, uh, I don't know if two changes to the order of the agenda, we are going to make one quick movement, um, item number five, Presentations, will come after item number three, uh, just to kind of speed it up so you guys don't have to stick around for too long. Um, Mr. Rubens, is there a report from closed session?
No report from closed session.
Okay, now we're gonna go to item number five, which is Presentations, and Mr. Marsters, I believe you're here in the audience.
So, I bring you greetings from the, uh, San Carlos Lions Club, um, and also, I think you need to come down here.
Yeah. Forgot his money.
And so, um, what I have is a check for, um, a thousand dollars from the San Carlos Lions Club for trees to be planted in Burden Park, and I have, uh, actually, it's a thousand two hundred and fifty because one of the donors donated through the Lions Club, but five hundred dollars for, um, planting of trees in the L'Oréal Park, so, there's a check for a thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks again to the Lions Club, uh, if any of you have a chance, if you go to L'Oréal Park, they, uh, planted a group of red maples, correct? Red maple trees, uh, in L'Oréal Park, and they now have a San Carlos Lions Grove named after them. Uh, next up, we have item five B, which is a presentation for the Girl Scouts, if someone wants to, I don't know who's accepting. Okay, that's fine, everyone can come up that wants to.
He won't bite, honest.
It's always comments.
Hey, listen, you're the mayor.
All right, well, how you doing?
Good.
Good, I'm Andy.
Nice to meet you, I'm Katie.
Nice to meet you, Katie. We are presenting a proclamation congratulating the Girl Scouts of the United States of America upon their one-hundredth anniversary and declaring March 11th through 17th, 2012, Girl Scouts Week. A couple of things I'm gonna read here, whereas on March 12th, 1912, the first Girl Scout meeting was held in Savannah, Georgia, and the first meeting was led by Juliette Gordon Low, the founder of Girl Scouts of the USA, after visiting the founders of both Boy Scouts and Girl Guides in England. And since this first meeting, more than fifty million girls have participated in the Girl Scout Movement during their childhood, and the number continues to grow as Girl Scouts of the USA continues to inspire, challenge, and empower girls everywhere. There are currently forty-seven thousand girls and thirty-two thousand adult members in the Northern California Council and three-point-two million members of the United States. Girl Scouts is the longest-running and most effective leadership program for girls in not only the nation but the world. Sixty-nine percent of current female US Senators, sixty-five percent of women in the House of Representatives, fifty-five percent of all women astronauts, and an estimated eighty percent of women business executives and business owners were former Girl Scouts. Girl Scouts in the nineteen hundreds developed the same core values while learning housekeeping and forestry badges as girls today learn while earning computer technology and financial literacy. And we know that the Girl Scouts develops girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. Now therefore, I, Andy Klein, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, proclaim March 11th through 17th, 2012, as Girl Scouts Week in commemoration of the one-hundredth anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA. Congratulations. And on another note, I'd like to invite you all back in two weeks, we are gonna have a special proclamation for Linda Toucheau, from, I know all of you know her, she's been serving the Girl Scouts for thirty-six years, and she's considered the mother of the Girl Scouts in Belmont, San Carlos, and Redwood Shores, so we'd love you all to come back and be there for her and show some great support, but congratulations to you, Girl Scouts, and congratulations to all the parents for raising such amazing children.
That's a good idea to move around.
Yeah. One or two now and then, Bob. Okay, we're gonna get to council communications and announcements, before we get to item four A, we'll do our standard communications, um, we'll start with you, Mr. Grokka.
Uh, the only item I have is, uh, just that, I don't know if the other council members received this, but, uh, just a letter from a, uh, resident in town, I'll just hand this over to staff, but he's just, he lives on First Street, and he's, uh, talking about the paving needing improvement, I don't know if the rest of the council got this or not, so, uh, I was just gonna hand it over to staff, he's asking to have his street looked at and a swale that's there to be, uh, either removed or repaired, so, I'll just pass that down to city staff.
Okay, um, Mr. Collins, you have anything?
Uh, no.
Mr. Griselli?
I have nothing in my, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Olbert?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I just wanted to mention, I had a, uh, great meeting with a group of, uh, committed and concerned, uh, parents from Britton Acres who were, uh, who were very anxious to see us do something about improving, uh, student pedestrian safety, uh, I hope that's a topic that we'll be bringing back to, uh, to discuss, and I'll just mention in passing that while we were there, Sergeant Steve happened to show up on his motor, and, uh, we discovered that your typical San Carlos driver is much, much better about following traffic rules with Sergeant Steve sitting there even when his back is towards the, towards the traffic.
Okay, thank you, um, the only thing I have is, tonight we interviewed five members for the Parks and Rec Commission, and it was five incredibly talented applicants, um, it's just sad that we can't put all five of them on, it's tough making decisions like this, and the council decided to appoint John Seeling and Brad Langford to the Parks and Rec Commission. So, thank, thank you very much to everyone for your time, and, uh, we look forward to seeing you soon. Okay, so we'll now move on to item, oh, I, that's, okay, no, just holding it up, item four A, consideration of holding a City Council Team Building Workshop, uh, Mr. Malpe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, as part of the recent strategic planning, uh, event, a, uh, SWAT analysis was done, uh, discussing some of the strengths and weaknesses, one of the weaknesses that was mentioned, uh, on a couple of occasions, uh, was, um, uh, council interaction and communication which led to a discussion about the council, uh, possibly wanting to consider holding a team-building workshop, uh, possibly using Marilyn Schneider and her colleague who does the scribe work at our strategic planning sessions as a moderator for, uh, such a session. We've talked with Ms. Schneider and her colleague, uh, they are available, they provided a couple of dates which are in the staff report for you to consider if those dates work and if the council has a desire to move ahead. I think this item, um, is kind of broad in its nature and certainly could be viewed as a, as a standalone team-building workshop for the City Council, you may want to include, uh, one or more staff members as an option, uh, which would, uh, certainly be doable. Uh, it could also evolve into more of a visioning, uh, session with links into the annual budget process and/or the strategic planning process, that would really be the council's purview, so we're looking forward, uh, we've put this on the agenda tonight to give the opportunity for the council to discuss this issue, and the staff be answer, happy to answer any questions or provide any additional detail and help move, uh, whatever decision the council's got forward.
Okay, does anyone want to start with discussion? Mr. Griselli?
Um, I guess my question is, we, we just had a, uh, a seven-hour, uh, I think it was seven hours or approximately that, with Ms. Snyder, uh, with our semi-annual retreat, and I guess I'm a little confused on, which I thought was good, we had all the staff there and all the city council there, how much more can we vision or plan or spend time? And the second point is, uh, I know that it's not a million dollars for her time, but in our, I think in our notes, it costs three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, I just don't know how, I, I guess I'm confused on perhaps the benefit economically and also time-wise of, of what would the outcome be, I guess, what are the, what are the, what are the outcomes, I mean, I'm not asking you directly, I'm just, it's a general question of what the outcomes might be, so I'm not necessarily, uh, in favor of this for those two reasons.
And Mr. Olbert?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I actually think this would be a good idea for us, us to do for, for a couple of reasons, um, one of the things that I, I felt after going through the, the strategic planning session that, that, um, Councilmember Griselli was just referring to, is, I actually hoped at that meeting that the council would actually have an opportunity to spend some time talking as a council, um, about longer-term issues, um, not necessarily coming up with the vision for San Carlos, but just talking about longer-term issues and strategies and goals and whatnot, um, that's something that, while there is work done on that, uh, the council itself didn't actually spend much time in that meeting talking as a council, working as a council, um, and I always find that time very precious because obviously by law, we can't talk to each other except in, in an agendized meeting, so not to take anything away from the meeting that we had there, but, but I thought it was primarily the outcome was, uh, a great set of goals and objectives for, you know, I tend to think of it as Mr. Malpe's goals and objectives for the, over the next six months. Um, I also think that there is value, uh, particularly with, you know, we have forty percent of the council that's new, um, uh, group dynamics always change when you, when you change that, that portion of things, uh, I think there would be some value in, uh, us doing some things to, uh, get to know each other a little bit better, talk about how we work together, um, certainly, I've had some perceptions and, and things I'd love to talk about, about how the council operates even in, in meetings, you know, it's sort of protocols and whatnot, um, I'm not sure I wanna do that at a, at a formal council meeting like this to take up time from the public, but this kind of session that, that I read, um, it read into the discussion or the item, uh, material here, I think that's a natural, that's exactly where we would be able to talk about some of that stuff, so I think it's a great thing if we can, if we can make the time for us to talk together as a group.
Okay, um, Mr. Collins, Mr. Grokka, do either of you have anything? Okay, Mr. Grokka.
Um, I guess, when I read this about a team-building workshop, I was a little confused because, um, just having my own perspective on it, what I was, uh, envisioning was a little bit more on the, on the lines of what, uh, Mr. Olbert was talking about in terms of discussing things about protocol, discussing, uh, some things about, um, big ideas that we may have for San Carlos and being able to share those, I find, uh, the, uh, strategic planning meeting to be stifling, quite frankly, um, and that was another thing that I wanted to, to see the council discuss was, you know, we've been using this for, I think about three, four years, something?
No, six.
Is it six years? Okay, all right, so it's been longer than, than I even remember, but, uh, it, to me, when we first started, uh, with the strategic planning, it was a new dynamic, it was exciting, I was, uh, glad to be doing it, but as I've been involved with it, uh, for that many years, like I say, I've seen it, it's process, I've gotten frustrated with its process, and yet we've never put the brakes on, reviewed it as a council, uh, talked about the pluses, and it does have pluses, but we haven't talked about the, the pluses and minuses of it, um, and how we might want to change it. Now, do we need to spend, uh, you know, money on a consultant to sit down in a room and, and talk about those things? I don't think so, I think we could, uh, we could probably find this lady down here to act as our moderator, somebody in town, just to, uh, help us out with something like that, sorry Laura, not to point you out, um, but, but I think we could do it for a lot less than three thousand dollars, um, I, I think we would be civil enough just amongst ourselves with somebody there to take notes, actually, um, so, that's the kind of thing that I would envision, I, so I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm in favor of it, would I call it a team-building workshop? No, I would just more call it, uh, a different kind of strategic planning perhaps, or even just, uh, as part of it, an evaluation of the strategic planning that we've been doing.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Um, I'm generally in favor of, uh, to, being new on the council, um, there's a lot of questions that I have, I, I like the, the idea of a little bit more focused meeting, um, and I like the idea of us learning a little bit more how we all work, um, a little bit more intimate setting, um, the strategic planning session was terrific, but it was a bit overwhelming, you know, we spent a long time, uh, with that, and I think there were probably some issues that a lot of us would rather have talked about, uh, a little bit in more depth, and I see this as an opportunity to do it, so I'm open to it.
All right, Mr. Malpe, so, you got three right there, we don't need a motion on this, Greg.
Well, we don't need a motion, but a little bit more discussion might be helpful around the, uh, notion of hiring, uh, a facilitator and what if any staff involvement you would like in that meeting.
Well, why don't we come to the decision on the, um, facilitator, and then you let me and Jeff go to the drawing board on what the meeting would be like, and we come back and talk about that, because if we're not gonna use a facilitator, then we have a little more time, these dates are only because that's when the facilitator gave us, so, Mr. Olbert, you, you, yeah?
I, I just was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, that, that, uh, I think there's some value to having a facilitator, but I frankly could go either way on that, because I think Matt's, uh, pardon me, Councilmember Grokka's absolutely right about that, we, we can certainly talk amongst ourselves. The one point I was gonna mention is, personally, um, uh, I wouldn't, I wanna keep the meeting relatively small and intimate, but I would personally appreciate the opportunity to have the city manager participate in the meeting as well, I would view it as kind of the six of us plus somebody to take notes or, or what have you, and of course, it's a public meeting, so it's open to everybody, but that's who I'd love to see involved in the discussion.
Um, Bob, you're a N A on paying money, I'm gonna, you're a N A, right? Yeah, yeah, I know, uh, and Matt, you, you would rather not spend the money, and I'd rather not spend the money, so, there you go, so we'll go to the drawing board and we'll bring something back, if that's okay with everyone? Okay, cool, moving on to item four B, consideration of City Council review of Planning Commission decision approving conditional use permit and architectural review for Carlos Club expansion, six-one-two, welcoming to Real, APN one-fifty, one-thirty-three, zero-nine-zero, and setting public hearing for review pursuant to municipal code eighteen-twenty-seven-one-fifty. Who's the staff member on this one? Mr. Rubens?
Well, this is on your agenda tonight, um, to provide the City Council with an opportunity to, um, exercise one of its rights it has under the code, under, um, the code section eighteen-twenty-seven, point one-five-oh-E, which is a call for review by the City Council. Call for review for all, um, practical purposes, just like an appeal, except it's called up by the City Council, so the rules governing appeals, um, would apply to a review, um, you would sit, uh, you, excuse me, you would set this, uh, for a, a public hearing on, for consideration of the review, the review, like an appeal, would be a de novo review, which means, uh, that the council would take a fresh look at, um, all the information to make or not make the findings, um, the Planning Commission decision does not have any precedent, uh, but it is part of the record.
Okay, are there any questions, or we can go to a public comment? Okay, I see no questions, so we'll just start a public comment when you come up, uh, you'll be limited to two minutes, if you would give us your name and your city of residence, that would be great. We saw it Frankie Dogadio, and then Anthony Awad.
Good evening, uh, my name is Frankie Dogadio, and I reside in San Bruno, and I am currently the, uh, General Manager for the Carlos Club, uh, I wanna, uh, thank you for your time and keep this brief, my hope in the decision that you make tonight is that you're making it based on the, uh, businesses, the businesses' need for survival, and also the, uh, current job security of the employees that are currently staffed to the Carlos Club. I wanna clarify the misinterpretation of the police incidents at the Carlos Club that were publicized and the negative perception that they have created, uh, my goal is to turn the perception of this data into reality for you, while maintaining that the Carlos Club is a safe place for our customers, as I have been the GM, and I was also the former head of security during the reported incidents, uh, and just going down, I just wanna talk about the number of incidents, two DUIs which accounted for one percent of the one-hundred-and-thirty-one alleged alcohol-related incidents at the Carlos Club, five drunken publics, which is three percent, uh, sixty-nine, um, police-induced, uh, spot checks that accounted for fifty-two percent of the data, and also just miscellaneous, uh, things that accounted for another forty-one percent, such as, uh, one private property tow, uh, one business check, one bike stop, one verbal disturb, disturbance, uh, one spousal abuse, one battery, one vehicle accident, two petty thefts, two parking complaints, two flag downs, I feel like the Carlos Club has done a tremendous job in the community, uh, just by, um, um, partaking in certain, uh, and various, um, donations, um, such as, uh, hosting, uh, two team and training benefits for the battle against leukemia and lymphoma, it's hosted two benefits for the Multiple Sclerosis Foundation, a benefit for the Susan B. Cohen Breast Cancer Walk, um, again, I just, uh, my goal tonight was just to clarify some of the alleged alcohol-related incidents, and again, turn the perception of what the numbers were, uh, were manipulated, um, within the newspapers, and, uh, turn them into reality for you guys to know that the Carlos Club is a safe place, and, uh, and the numbers are a lot smaller than, uh, than they were actually, um, engineered, uh, to, to churn out in, in the, uh, different and various newspaper articles, and, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Awad, followed by Mike Amin.
My name is Anthony Awad, I live on one thousand and sixth Avenue, Belmont, California. I'm here to, um, support Fred, and, um, I was very pleased that the Planning Commission approved his, uh, application to go with the expansion, but I was very disappointed that the mayor appealed it, and, um, the Planning Commission worked really, really hard on this project for almost a year, and I came to a lot of the meetings here, and I'm really surprised that not one time the mayor showed up to, um, express his concern about the public safety, till we went through this whole project and finally got approved, and according to one of the local newspapers, the Daily Journal, he expressed his feeling that the Planning Commission made a mistake by giving the Carlos Club a permission to expand, ignoring the public safety, and I absolutely disagree with that comment, because I think the Planning Commission did an awesome job looking at this project for over a year now, and I'm sure the public safety was one of their main priority, I think the Carlos Club would be incredible for the community, we come here, we spend a lot of money, we're not even from San Carlos, but my kids, my wife, we come to San Carlos because we love what the city offers, we love all the new businesses and the energy that San Carlos, uh, has, and I really don't think that the Carlos Club is the cause of all the drama that's been being expressed in the last few meetings, if you look at any restaurant downtown, they, you do the same thing where people go eat and drink and get in their car, but you don't see cops hanging around downtown watching customers leaving their restaurants, uh, getting behind their wheels with whatever percentage of alcohol they happen to system. I think the other thing too that Fred is trying to do is trying to change the image of the Carlos Club into a restaurant, which is, is gonna completely change the clientele as well, so I hope you, um, approve of the, uh, expansion, and, um, you know, hopefully Freddie will show you that this was the right decision that he, that the Planning Commission has made, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
May I make one clarification?
Yes, sir.
Just very quickly, um, ju, just for your knowledge and the knowledge of the audience, council members don't generally attend Planning Commission meetings or, or any of our commissions, um, because it could cause undue influence, but I respect your comments, but I just wanted to clarify that, yeah.
Mike Amin, followed by Russ Portetta.
Good evening, uh, council members, Mayor, uh, I wanna give you a little bit of a background of who I am, I live in Belmont, California, to, number two English Court, Fred Duncan is a friend, and, uh, I'm also a patron of, of the Carlos Club, um, my background is hospitality-related, I own, develop, manage, operate hotels, uh, clubs, restaurants, I sat on the board of Hilton Corporation, Marriott, uh, Carlson Hotels, and, uh, most currently at the USF Hospital, School of Hospitality. Fred asked me to, uh, come on board and help him, as a friend, of what I thought about introducing the element of food in an outdoor environment, in my opinion, I thought that was a great thing for San Carlos, I frequent San Carlos a lot because it has something to offer that Belmont does not, a lively, uh, retail, commercial, entertainment venue, and you should be proud of that, and almost, all Mr. Duncan wants to do is enhance that and give us more options to do something in downtown, the presence you may set or try to set is quite dangerous, you might as well start at one, uh, one end of San Carlos and go to the other end of San Carlos, and might as well start looking at different other venues such as the office, town, and, uh, if it becomes a witch hunt, I, I really feel sorry for you guys, because that's not what this is intended for, this is, what, what, what Mr. Duncan has been trying to do is enhance the image, because people like myself, people from Google, venture capitalists, doctors from Palo Alto, could, do come there and enjoy the venue that San Carlos offers, and, and Carlos Club is one of those, so in conclusion, I really think you should take, take some expert advice and embrace the Carlos Club and its expansion, introducing the food component by any and all experts would suggest that the Carlos Club becomes more than just a drinking establishment, it becomes a social environment, which a lot of people like to do and walk the downtown's, uh, corridor of Laurel Street, thank you very much.
Thank you. Russ Portetta, followed by Fred Duncan.
Good evening, I'm Russ Portetta, I live at sixteen-twenty White Oak Way, San Carlos, and a resident for twenty-seven years, uh, as a former General Manager of the Carlos Club, and am currently employed occasionally by the club. If Fred Duncan had not been such a success starting in two, October of two thousand eight, we wouldn't be here tonight debating the future of the Carlos Club. In January of two thousand eight, Fred wagered a very sizable amount of money that the peninsula was ready for a dance club. When the renovation of the Carlos Club began, Fred was regarded as something of a hero in San Carlos, he was keeping an iconic institution but rescuing it from the dive that it had become, complete with faulty sewage, a crumbling foundation, rampant drug dealing, major fights, and regular appearances by local motorcycle gangs, no one, I repeat, no one complained about the change in the Carlos Club in two thousand eight. Now in two thousand twelve, Fred is willing to wager another sizable amount of money that a unique and attractive outside dining area will reinvigorate a business that has become dependent on Friday and Saturday nights to survive, that's the reality of our situation now, uh, members of the council, two nights a week. One of the conditions imposed by the much-maligned Planning Commission, which was described in the, uh, March eighth edition of the Daily Journal as not caring about the public safety, that was a quote, that's like to say that myself, as a member of the Carlos Club family, is not concerned about the public safety of San, uh, San Carlos as a resident, was that Fred be granted a one-year conditional use permit for the outside area. If, at that time, the city felt that we were not in compliant, compliance, the permit will be pulled, how many people would be willing to spend several hundred thousand dollars on a one-year permit?
We're gonna need you to wrap up, Mr. Portetta.
If they didn't believe that it was good investment that would stand the test of time and help promote the long-term growth of San Carlos, please, please uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
Thank you. Fred Duncan, followed by Una Kinsella.
Thank you for your time tonight, and I wanna thank everyone that's come up and spoken on my behalf, I appreciate it, uh, my name is Fred Duncan, I'm the owner of the Carlos Club, I am also the property owner with my brother and brother-in-law, it's a family business, uh, we purchased six years ago and we did an extensive remodel, I know some of you have never been in there since, but it's a complete different place, we also received a beautification award from the Chamber of Commerce, we presented that at the yearly gala for Citizen of the Year, uh, so, this outdoor patio is really an indoor-outdoor restaurant, and it is a large investment, and I estimate it's gonna be a few hundred thousand plus, it's not a taco truck, uh, there's someone that was calling it a taco truck in, in the, uh, newspapers, uh, I'm gonna offer gourmet food. In two thousand eleven, June two thousand eleven, I did receive a conditional use, use permit, they gave me a permit, the City of San Carlos, to operate an outdoor restaurant, okay, but they needed to look at it a little bit further, the city always knew my plans, go back all the way to early two thousand ten, Deborah Nelson emails me, Fred, the staff has evaluated your preliminary ideas for expanding the Carlos Club for outdoor use, at that moment, building, planning, fire, and police made extensive comments, it went through the city, this has been a hot topic for two years now, finally, City of San Carlos tells me Planning Commission must decide my fate, the first hearing, October tenth, two thousand eleven, my lawyer presented my, my idea, it seemed receptive, the Planning Department, excuse me, Planning Commission said we need more information, um, at that point, um... At that point, the police did a 20-minute presentation and so-called 131 incidents was publicized in many papers. 131 incidents. None of them were calls. They were all self-motivated incidents. Then we go to, we roll up to December 5, 2005, and we have a reschedule for the hearing because a new article comes out in the paper discrediting me and what we're doing. Finally, January 20th, 25th, Commission hearing.
Mr. Duncan, we're going to need you to start wrapping up, please.
They requested a noise analysis that cost me $6,500. The commission read that. We have fifth, another hearing, third hearing on March 5, and the noise study proves Carlos Club is within guidelines. It's a 25-page report. Planning Commission votes four to one. Only one person, only one, appeared in public to voice their opposition, one person after six months, three staff reports, a $6,500 acoustic analysis, sheriff records signed by Greg Monks showing what the incidents really are, 10-plus front storage.
Mr. Duncan, we're going to need you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Una Consella followed by Glenn Gellin.
Good evening, City Council members. My name's Una Consella. I'm the architect working with Fred on this project. I hope you had the opportunity to review our letter and our request for you as the City Council to uphold the Planning Commission approval for the Carlos Club. I think we're here tonight because there are still concerns about what wasn't done over the last five months since I was hired by Fred, but I think that what I'd like to do tonight is tell you about the things that have been done because there has been a lot, a lot of work and I've been very involved in it. First of all, I'd like to tell you that we've done significant public outreach. I think I outlined that in my letter to you and I think you can read that through all the minutes. We've also asked for additional backup information from the sheriff with respect to the incidents that have been cited and discussed without a lot of detail, and I think that we feel very clear about what the results of those are. In terms of the design, we've worked closely with the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, the Fire Department, the Building Department. We had a meeting where we requested everybody to be present to tell us what their concerns were so that we could address the concerns and we did that. Unfortunately, the Police Department wasn't involved in that, although we did invite them to come to that meeting. The design details that we changed were regarding the wall around the patio. We lowered it. We increased visibility with bigger, larger windows. We reduced the hours of operations. We limited the total number of occupants that will be out on the patio where we are allowed by code to have 178 based on the square footage. We've reduced that to 96 dining patrons plus security and staff. We've created a queuing area within the patio to eliminate people being on the sidewalk area outside the wall adjacent to the asphalt paving at the alleyway. We improved the patio design, the overall design, and eliminated any potential darkened hidden corners, which were something that was brought up at a Planning Commission hearing. We designed the patio to be a safe, well-defined space with lots of security. Fred has said in public that he will provide security at every entrance, point of entrance and exit. We've done the noise study.
Miss Consella, we're going to need you to wrap up, please.
Okay, I just want to say that if it isn't obvious yet, we'd like you to know that we really want to make this project happen and we think that this will be a great and tremendous asset to the City of San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Gellin followed by A.J. Wallia.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight I stand before you as the team leader for California Alliance Property Rights. With regards to Carlos Club, I believe that we need to maintain a consideration of a property's owner's right to develop his property to its highest and best use. I think in these economic times, it would be helpful for the city to consider the economic conditions and anything that will bring enhanced vitality to this community and bring patrons in into the area would be a positive thing that you should be working and striving for. I'm not a regular patron of the Carlos Club. I have been in there since Mr. Duncan has remodeled it. I had been in the previous Carlos Club and I know what that was. I think he should be commended for what he's done. He's actually enhancing property in our community. We should be grateful for that. I urge your support for his continuing with his plans. I think it would be good for the community and good for the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. A.J. Wallia followed by Dr. David Muller.
Hi, good evening. My name is A.J. Wallia. I'm a local business owner, was adjacent to Carlos Club, and I've also been a patron at various times at the Carlos Club. And I just wanted to come in and support Fred Duncan here and the Carlos Club for what we're presenting here because I have seen, I've been in the city for over, close to a decade now, and I've seen how the Carlos Club has transformed and I think it's like having a restaurant attached to a bar will change the perception and the client base eventually so that the incidents or anything that is of concern will not be there. So it's like, so I definitely support it. There has been a major transformation into Carlos Club from what it used to be and I would like to see it a second, go further so that it can enhance what we offer in the city as well.
Thank you. Dr. Muller followed by, I believe it's Mikel Brozus.
Yeah, thank you all for being public servants in what I'm sure is a thankless job. I'm a professor at Stanford and I'm a reviewer for scientific accuracy for a number of the major journals in orthopedic surgery, surgery and surgical oncology, which is my specialty. When I was originally sent the newspaper article to look at the statistics and data on the Sheriff's Department material, it was clear as a reviewer, there was no way to make sense of these statistics. They were officer-initiated. I know from having been to the Carlos Club and the office, the venues are different. The police do sit in the parking lot. It's a convenient place to patrol downtown and park without obstructing traffic and it would lead to an inability to make direct comparisons between the two patients, if we'll call the office and the Carlos Club patients. So there was inherent bias in the data, apples and oranges comparison, and I, as a reviewer, couldn't recommend to you to use that as data for making public policy decisions. There would be ways to stratify it better, but what you were presented with is inadequate for making decisions about treatment in essence of what you're going to do to try and get the best public safety mix. I have a police background from Army Special Operations with JTF Six, so I'm somewhat familiar with this area as well. That said, evidence in the literature abounds that adding food to an entertainment venue reduces alcohol-related complaints, inebriation because of the changes in metabolism of the alcohol and the change in demographic mix of who goes to these. The office has a very different clientele and different hours of operation of that clientele. And I think your reluctance to do anything with the Carlos Club may be standing in the way of something that actually is going to get you closer to the goal you're seeking, which is an enjoyable atmosphere with a minimum of police-initiated or police-required events. Thank you.
Thank you. Mikel Brozus followed by Gina Vanellos.
Good evening, council members. That's Michael Broyles.
Oh, sorry.
Mayor. I would like to address two particular issues regarding this agenda right now. I happen to be a local business owner in the town of San Carlos. I own two small businesses. One is involved in music production and performance and one is also involved in design and landscape architecture. And I would just like to comment very briefly, I understand we have two minutes. I would like to just comment very briefly about the fact that the Carlos Club, what has been already shared by those who previously spoke, happens to reflect a great improvement for this particular area of San Carlos. Also, I would like to speak not only for myself as a professional musician, but for other musicians that the Carlos Club has given work to in the past and will continue to do so as a result of this planned expansion. I also find it rather humorous that the mayor is concerned about safety of the Carlos Club. Maybe I read the article wrong in last, one of the daily rags last week, I believe it was the Post or the Daily Journal, which stated something to the nature, which was also previously mentioned, something to the nature in one-year span of 131 incidents that were reported to law enforcement. And it went on to say only 69 were actually spot checks initiated by deputies. I happen to feel that San Carlos law enforcement makes quite a visible presence at the Carlos Club toward the closing hours. I for one have walked out of the Carlos Club with my wife, with my friends, with other business colleagues toward the end of the evening and seen a rather pronounced law enforcement presence in the back, squad cars parked there. So this issue about safety, I have a little confused about and maybe the mayor would like to pay a visit to the Carlos Club sometime during normal business hours and check it out for yourself. I have one question for Councilman Grokot. I believe you said that it's common that there is a normal practice that council members do not attend Planning Commission meetings. Is that what I heard you say?
This isn't really a question-and-answer time. You can answer after he's done, but we need you to wrap up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Grokot, I don't know if that's even a question, so.
Well, for the audience, I was just saying that generally council members do not attend any of the commission meetings except we do occasionally as a liaison, but we don't attend those meetings because we don't want our presence to impact or affect the outcome of decisions that our commissioners make. We put them in place to make decisions and bring them up to us. It would be undue for us to attend those meetings and cause undue influence.
Gina Vanellos and Michael Chilton.
Hi, I'm Gina Vanellos and I live on the 900 block of Montgomery and I want to say that I am very concerned about stretching police resources with this club. I know our very own Police Commissioner has mentioned this and I take that very seriously, what he says. The other thing that I'm concerned about too is the sound bouncing into our neighborhood. And I have to say that the Carlos Club has said that they're going to keep their doors shut. With just their door open, the sound bounces into our neighborhood and we can hear it at night, windows shut, you know, 12 o'clock, and there's a huge concern. They have said they're going to keep their doors shut, but I'm not sure. Last summer we would call and say, you know, we can hear the Carlos Club. Can you, we would call the police and they would, the police would go there and they would shut their door, but then like two weeks later, could you tell the Carlos Club to shut their door? It's too noisy. And I just, I just think that kind of is a little telling about this. I'm very concerned about an open-air venue because then they can't shut their door and it's, and what am I going to do? It's too loud. Could you tell them to turn it down, please? And I think it's just like going to be a nightmare. And that's my major, these are big concerns that we have. And believe it or not, the sound does travel into the 900 block of Montgomery and will keep us awake. We are aware of that loud noise. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Chilton followed by Dimitri Vanellos.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Mike Chilton. I reside in Portola Valley. I'm also a business owner here in San Carlos, Chilton Autobody. I'm also partners with Fred in the property. I have no interest in the business. But I was in a similar situation that Fred is here before you in 1993 in San Mateo where I was originally located and I gave up. I didn't have the perseverance Fred did and I moved to your city because you were receptive to new businesses coming in. In 19 years, we've done almost $100 million in sales in your city. So I respectfully request that you uphold the Planning Commission's decision to let the Carlos Club expand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members. I'm here on my own behalf and also representing the GESC Neighborhood Association and we have gone on record as being opposed to the expansion for a number of reasons, police concerns being one of them. One of the key issues here is, I want to talk about the club, but I also want to talk about what I think is a deeper-seated issue. You know, they want to do outdoor live music, which hey, I'm a, I made my living as a professional musician for many years. I'd love to see that, but it doesn't make sense in the current location. So when I look at this proposal, it feels like a square peg in a round hole. You're tripling, roughly tripling the club and most of that patronage is going to be outside. So we may have sound issues just with the patrons themselves, let alone live entertainment outdoors. This is going to turn into an enforcement issue. As my wife said earlier, we've had, we've, I was shocked a couple of years ago when I was hearing music and I thought it was a neighbor and I walked all the way down and discovered it was Carlos Club when their doors were open. And they used to do that much more consistently until there were more and more complaints. And I feel that this is going to be an ongoing enforcement issue, that there are going to be more and more calls and it's a problem because of that. So the enforcement angle is a big one. I also think that, you know, when we talk about rights, talk about property rights, ownership rights, particularly one viewed by the Planning Commission always is skewed towards whoever is, you know, the business owner. But no one's talking about my property right, my right to enjoy my home in the evening in peace and quiet. And this is going to seriously infringe on that.
Mr. Vanellos, you need to start wrapping up.
Excuse me?
We're going to need you to start wrapping up.
Okay.
And thank you to the gentleman, but we're keeping time up here, not your time.
Okay.
That wasn't towards you, Dimitri, sorry.
Do I have a minute?
Yeah, you have a couple of seconds.
Okay, great. So, you know, essentially the sound is going to bounce and there's going to be no way to control it. There are no doors to close. And the bigger issue in my mind is how the Planning Commission goes about making decisions.
Dimitri, we really need, can need you to wrap up.
Okay, I've got two more, three more points here.
Just one more and that's it.
Okay, I guess I'm done.
You hit your point. Thank you, Dimitri. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Come on up and fill out a comment card when you're done.
I have to fill out a comment card for that.
Oh, Paul, sorry. You're here for number six, so I'll fix it where, Paul Maginetti.
Hey, Paul Maginetti, I reside in San Carlos, California. The City Council is considering a review of a vetted decision by the Planning Commission, a decision that promotes business first and the needs of the community a distant second. Welcome to our world. The current Planning Commission defines the limits of its responsibility so narrowly that they can rationalize away any detrimental effect as somebody else's problem. Our mayor once noted that he was uncomfortable with the process by which we bring competing ideas before the council, that we should use the process. The process is broken. Fix the process. I appreciate that the City Council has worked hard to get our fiscal house in order and to keep the car from running off the road. Please keep in mind where the road is going and make sure it's a trip worth taking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the speakers we have, so we're going to open this up for discussion. Remember, this isn't a discussion about the application itself, it's a discussion about whether or not we wish to appeal. Would anyone like to start? Mark, or Mr. Olbert, sorry.
That's right. Mayor Clyde. I'll just keep this short. I think this is a very interesting issue, interesting decision. There are a lot of aspects to it and as a result of that, I would be supportive of us appealing it or pulling it up from the Planning Commission for us to review it in detail at the council level.
Okay. Mr. Grisilli, do you have anything to add?
I don't know how far, you mentioned, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. How do you want this to go?
We're just talking about whether or not we want to appeal, so we can't really go, I mean, you can talk about the application, but we're going, if we do appeal, we have to have a public hearing about that.
I'm confused. I've got a number of points to bring up here, so I don't know whether I discuss them or just go like this or like this.
Well, the, through the Mayor, Councilmember Grisilli, the items agendized pursuant to the municipal code that allows you to call up a matter for review, this is not, this is not the public hearing for the merits of the application. It's an opportunity for you to decide whether or not you want to review the procedure. If there's some factors that you feel you want to discuss that would be appropriate, it would be within that agenda.
Okay, well, I've got a number of points, but I think you're right about, that I'd bring them up later. I was on the Planning Commission for six years and we made decisions and periodically they would be appealed by individuals. Should we say the person who was pro or con in a lot of those land use? I don't remember.
I'm, I don't remember ever being on the Planning Commission and having it done in any other way by any member of the City Council or by staff. So we're setting a precedent here, in my opinion, and I'm not sure it's a good one. So I wouldn't necessarily, I would, I know the Planning Commission did a lot of work, they spent a lot of time, and I would, uh, say that that's the decision they had.
Okay. Mr. Collins or Grocott? Mr. Collins?
Um, I want to thank all the people that spoke tonight in, in support of the project, uh, of the expansion of the Carlos Club. I think you made, all made, uh, a lot of excellent points. I too was on the Planning Commission for four years, uh, several years ago. But I think that, uh, in this case, uh, we need a full vetting. I, I'm not sure we've had a full vetting. Um, I, I would like to hear more from the police chief about his concerns. I'd like, uh, some better detailing of the, um, of the incident reports. And I'd like to hear all sides. And I, and as I say, I, I'm impressed with, uh, all of the points that people made tonight, uh, both for and against, but I don't think I'm ready to make a decision about it, and so I would like to see this reviewed.
Mr. Grocott?
Um, I don't know when to talk about, the, the first concern I had was just process and how this ended up on our agenda quite the way that it did. Um, but I suppose that's a different topic for, or, you know, discussion for a different, under a different heading. But it is curious to me how it ended up on here and agendized and so forth. But to me, to Mr. Collins' point, you're talking about you want to know more, um, which I can, you know, I can respect that, but I, I look at what this person has been through starting in, uh, 2010 and then having three hearings with the Planning Commission. And I, you know, I respect our Planning Commission and their, the work that they do. Uh, they, you know, they, they put a lot into this and, and, uh, there's obviously a lot of staff time involved already, a lot of time by the applicant and, uh, what the architect had said about significant public outreach and, and, uh, reaching out to the building department, the planning department, the fire department, inviting the police department to that meeting, but they didn't attend. And then the changes that have been made. To me, it's sufficient that the, uh, the hearing, if you will, is the one year, one year use permit. And I don't see why we shouldn't just let this, you know, the owner's obviously gone through a lot of money already. Um, now, they're not having to spend any more money per se, except maybe for their architect and their attorney to be at another meeting. But they, you know, they've, they've invested quite a bit in this process. Um, and, uh, I think they do want to be good members of our community. And I, I would just be in favor of letting them be under their use permit for a year that was approved by the Planning Commission. If they fail that, then they fail.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grocott. Um, I, I disagree with, uh, Mr. Grocott's comments. I'm worried that if we give the one use permit and we have these issues that I don't think have been vetted like Mr. Collins says, it's very hard to take that back. Um, because you're not talking about allowing someone to build something, you're talking about closing something down. And I think that's a much different conversation and much harder conversation. So I'm in favor of, uh, appealing this process as has been stated multiple times. Also to the members of the public who invited me to go to the Carlos Club, I have been more, there more times than I wish to count, and I've seen all of these incidents. Um, so I am thoroughly looking forward to having a discussion with our police chief about this. I'm, I'm not, uh, I don't have the wool pulled over my eyes. So, uh, I'd like, uh, Mr. Collins or Mr. Olbert, if you'd like to make a motion, we could vote on this. I don't, Mr. Rubens, what, uh, do you need us to set a hearing date?
Well, I, I took a, a look at the ordinance and we have it agendized for you to, to set the hearing date. Um, under the, under the code, you don't actually have to set the, the hearing tonight, but it's my recommendation that if there's an available date in the near future, that, um, you set the hearing. And that's partially because, um, everything is stayed pending your final decision on, on, um, this, should you vote to have it reviewed. And, um, I think it's fair to all parties to have, um, the matter considered as in a reasonable amount of time.
Mr. Malp, do we have an open date?
Well, we'd like to, out of respect for the applicant, bring this forward, uh, at one of the two next, uh, council meetings, so in about the next 30 days, uh, giving the staff some time to follow up with the applicant, make sure everybody, uh, is available, uh, pick one of the next two and move forward. So if we can make the motion, uh, leaving the date open, it's our intention to have it on the agenda in the next two meetings.
Okay.
Through the chair. I, I really believe, uh, you know, the time that's been spent here, that it should be the next meeting. I just don't understand why it shouldn't be. Staff has seen this till the cows come home. If they haven't, then somebody didn't do the work on the planning side, Mr. Malp, with all due respect. So I think it should be the next meeting, because I think this is, let's decide up or down, and this gentleman can then go on with his life, one way or the other way.
If that's what the council would like.
I mean, I, I just would ask my council, my fellow council members to, I mean, it's been going on a while. This isn't, it didn't start yesterday, so I would hope that we could hear it through the air.
Through the chair. I have a question that's, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and ask the question, uh, that I alluded to earlier in my opening remarks, because I don't understand the process here in that, um, this shows up on our agenda, not just as, uh, number one, it's under council reports, okay? So usually when we bring up something under council reports, if there's a, if there's something that we as a council member are interested in, uh, you know, maybe we can, we can just bring it up. It doesn't even have to be printed here as it is. And then if there's a consensus of the council that's indicated when the issue is raised, then it's agendized for action. This seems to be as though we're taking action on something that's under council reports, and that to me is confusing. I don't understand that technicality. Now, I can see us going ahead and setting a date by consensus, but I don't see how we can vote on this item when it's not, it's not under, it's not an action item in my estimation.
Well, Sir Rubens?
I, I can answer that question. The code provides that review, review and appeals must be, um, filed or, in, in this case, the review, the majority vote of the council is required within 10 days of the action. So, um, uh, the, the idea was that this matter, we give you the opportunity, whether it's on, at this part of the agenda or not, the issue was to agendize it so that it would be available for the public to know. It was nothing more than that. Otherwise, it wouldn't, would not appear on the agenda and we, we thought at the staff level, and I thought, it was my recommendation, that, um, if there was some discussion that the council might want to take it up, would be better to put it on the agenda so it would appear within that 10-day, um, timeline.
So the way that it, just to vet the question, and the way this ended up on the agenda, is staff put it on the agenda?
No, I had a meeting with the, with the city manager and multiple city council members had come to him saying that they wished to discuss appealing. So we thought the proper form would be to agendize it so the applicant could know that this was happening, because the other way it would have happened was it never would have been on the agenda. We would have got a consensus. There wouldn't have been much public comment, but since they wouldn't have been here, because we're only given a 10-day window and we have city council meetings every 14 days.
Okay.
So, I mean, they, it's, we have a 10-day window, so there's not a lot we can do with, with that. So, okay. Mr. Olbert?
Um, I, just one last clarification question. Are we actually voting on this or are we achieving a consensus?
Oh, it, I, it's a vote. Majority votes required under the code.
Um, I move that we, um, schedule, uh, we arrange, we have staff schedule, um, a review of the Planning Commission's decision.
Do you need anything more than that, Mr. Rubens?
Um, it, there was some discussion about when. Again, the code doesn't require you to, to set the public hearing tonight, but if you would like to give us a date certain, it would be appropriate to include that in the motion.
Next meeting.
Um, would, uh, may I ask staff a question?
Yeah.
Um, would staff be prepared to, uh, do this at the next meeting?
Uh, we certainly will do our best, I, I think, to answer, uh, Councilmember Grisilli's point earlier, and we certainly do want to move this forward for the applicant. This has been a long process for them, uh, as well as the staff. However, uh, based on conversations that I've had with you all, or most of you individually, there's a number of new questions and additional information that you're all looking for. And so I'd like to, I would actually prefer to set it for the first meeting in April to make sure that everybody's got enough time to get that information, uh, you require so that we don't end up having a public hearing and then continuing it to a later date because there's additional information required.
Um, well, I personally don't want to see the matter continued because that would take even longer, so, uh, I'll float the idea of my motion being that we have this item come up before us for review at the first meeting in April, and we'll see if that flies.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item six, public comments. This is for persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more than five, oh, I don't need to read the rest. So, uh, we are starting with Mr. Gelenau. Glenn, we're going to need you to come up and talk before you talk to the reporter. You're in, you're in line.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you recall, in January, um, I was here on, regarding the issue of ICLI. Uh, at that time, staff, uh, provided a report to you that, in my opinion, was, uh, less than accurate. And, uh, he made, uh, a particular statement that there was no connection between UN Agenda 21 and local Agenda 21 and ICLI. And, uh, I would like to submit to the council, uh, as record, a copy of ICLI's tax return where their mission statement, written right on the tax return, is to help cities implement local Agenda 21.
Thank you, Mr. Gelenau. Do you have any other comments?
Uh, only that, uh, I would ask that, uh, council, uh, verify the veracity of information that they're supplied with before they vote on issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion, though we know separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Does any council member wish to remove an item?
Seven E.
Seven E, okay. Anything else? If not, can we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve item seven A, B, C, D, and F on our consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we need to have, um, the council member read item F and, and title.
Okay. Right, I've got it right here. Thank you. Uh, ordinance number 1443, ordinance of the City Council, the City of San Carlos, adopting minor text amendments to Title 18 zoning of the San Carlos Municipal Code. Does that work?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Hey, was there a second? I didn't remember.
Yes, second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Grocott, you pulled item 7E.
So the reason I pulled this is, uh, there is a item in here, number 17, that, uh, let me see if that's the, yeah, item number 17, it's, I'll read it just so that we all know what, what we're talking about here. Um, the supervisors recommend that Belmont and San Carlos, uh, recommended that Belmont and San Carlos enter into mediation to continue their joint fire department while regionalization alternatives could be explored. Then it says, "From interviews and meeting transcripts, most San Carlos and Belmont officials stated there was little chance for mediation to be successful." And then there's a, uh, two paragraphs that contest that and say, "We partially disagree with the finding." And I'm not sure how we can disagree with the finding when, when I read that, it seemed to be what they're saying is, "From interviews and meeting transcripts," meeting transcripts would be, I suppose, from our meetings and Belmont's meetings. But from interviews, I would take that to be the interviews that the, uh...
Civil grand jury?
That the civil grand jury, uh, held. And so that, you know, we weren't part of those interviews. We didn't, uh, sit in on those and hear the answers. And so if the civil grand jury interviewed people from San Carlos and Belmont and from their responses came up with the, uh, the belief or, or the, as they said here, uh, the understanding that there was little chance for mediation to be successful, who are we to contest that?
Well, um, Mr. Grocott, and, and I looked at this too and, and went a little back and forth about it. And I think what the staff and myself was doing, we can't speak to what was said in confidential meetings. All we can speak to is what the votes were and what we saw. Um, so I don't know if it was three council members, one council member, I don't even know which council members got impaneled by the civil grand jury. So all we can focus on is the things we do know, and that's what we saw in the public meetings. And I think that's where the disagreement comes, is from what we've saw, we believe there was, uh, agreement among the council, the vote was 5-0, Belmont voted also in favor of exploring mediation. And that's the only thing we can make, uh, a finding or a judgment on was based on what we saw. I don't know if, if you went to the civil grand jury, you don't know if I went to the civil grand jury, and we're not allowed to talk about that, it's confidential meetings. Um, so that's, we can only go with what we know.
Well, again, I don't see the, the need to contest their process or, or deny their statement here, because as you, as you just stated, we weren't in those interviews. We don't know what was said. And what they're saying is, based on the interviews, uh, and, and also the transcripts from meetings, there was little chance for mediation to be successful. Fine, if that's, if that was their takeaway from their interviews, let that be their takeaway. I don't see how we can contest that.
Okay. Um, so then you're under the belief that every civil grand jury report, we should just take on spec?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying on this particular point, um, that's their takeaway from their interviews and, uh, you know, let that be their takeaway from the interviews. I don't, I don't see why we have to have this whole, uh, two paragraph explanation of, of, uh, events that, you know, the, what we're explaining, what's, what's here is, is not their interviews.
And I, I guess, Mayor, through the chair, just to explain the draft, and again, at the end of the day, it's up to the council, of course, uh, to respond to the grand jury, uh, is, uh, as, as Councilmember Grocott points out, it talks about meeting transcripts and interviews. And from the staff perspective, if you look at the meeting transcripts from San Carlos, you'll see the items discussed in the first paragraph, that at the transcript of the F&amp;O meeting, both the mayor and vice mayor of San Carlos and Councilmember Royce, all three of you said, "We're in favor and we're, make it work." At the subsequent council meeting, there was a 5-0 vote where all five of the council members said it would work. And then subsequently, the city council had both open and closed sessions to provide direction to your negotiator, which in this case was former Mayor Ahmad, as to the parameters under which you thought it could succeed. So I think the point that we're saying here is that by saying, "We partially disagree," we don't totally disagree, is we're saying that up to the point where the City of San Carlos appointed Mayor Ahmad, gave him direction and gave him a 5-0 mandate to go into mediation, if you take those meeting transcripts, and again, I, I can't speak for the Belmont meeting transcripts, all of those discussions from the San Carlos side at least indicated that the San Carlos five council members did believe it would work.
Well, I, I think, through the chair, I think it's parsing, what it is, is the situation that, that this first paragraph or the, the grand jury says, "Little chance to be successful." That's not what we voted on. We voted on, we wanted to do it. So it's completely different. It's completely separate. So I, I sort of agree with what's written here, Councilmember Grocott, because it's, we partially disagree with the finding. I don't know if there's any, if we have to respond to it, I don't know if there's any other way we can respond to it, except, except that we have no comment.
Through, through the mayor, I might make a suggestion to add, I mean, it would be, you know, Councilmember Grocott's point of view, I think, is, is entirely, um, on point.
Grocott's point of view, I think, is entirely on point, and you might add a paragraph above that, just acknowledging that we're not aware of what interviews took place, and so we're not disputing that portion of it, but we're kind of clarifying our interpretation of our own record. And just having sort of both sides to why it is we partially disagree, so that we can maybe put a paragraph in about the part we do agree with.
Yeah, is that okay, Councilman Grocott?
I think that would be helpful, yes.
Okay, good. Is there a motion?
I don't want done.
Oh, okay.
Under the conclusions on page five, it says, "Cal Fire should be viewed as a viable alternative for fire protection services by the county and the cities when considering regionalization or outsourcing alternatives." And it says, "We agree with the finding." I disagree with the finding. And I don't think, the way it seems to be put here, anyway, and the way it seems that the grand jury was going with this, was that if we were to do regionalization of fire, that having Cal Fire run the whole program for the whole county would be a viable option. I disagree. I think they would be, should they be involved in the regionalization? I think they should. I think they should as a source for a fire department that will deal with wildland fires and open space and those kinds of areas. But having them be part of a regionalization to take care of urban fire, I don't think so. So, I can't agree with that conclusion. Don't think it works.
Okay, I think this is just, it's a policy decision, and I think what the staff and myself was trying to point out was that it's a viable alternative, meaning it's gonna be one of many options that people could look at. And we didn't want to limit the options that other cities look at. I think I was coming from the standpoint, and everyone can weigh in, that we should have all the options at the table whenever we make a decision.
Yeah, I think the mayor's comments or mirror the staff's, that Cal Fire is an option, and as the council, or some of you will recall, when we hired Tri-Data in the summer of 2010, that was one of the questions the city council put to them. Do you think that Cal Fire is an option for regional fire services or for fire services in San Carlos? And as you know, Tri-Data issued two reports to you, both of which saying that they believed that Tri-Data was, or, try to, excuse me, that Cal Fire was, in fact, a viable option. And they also pointed out, as we point out in this letter, that for the last ten years, Cal Fire has been the first responders for a portion of this community. So, they said that they certainly are capable of doing urban fire services, and they do, in fact, do urban fire services, not only in incorporated areas, but in your city. So, and again, that's, so it's not only a staff and mayor observation, it's our independent consultants' observation.
Through the chair, could I ask a question of our city attorney?
Sure.
On these letters, when we write these letters, if some of us disagree with some of the points, then do we just vote on, and if the majority vote, then it goes? Is that how it works?
That's how it would work.
Okay. I just, to your point, I actually missed that one. And I sort of agree with you, because I don't think it's, even though Tri-Data gave it to us, I don't agree with Tri-Data on a lot of stuff they had either. So, I think you just need to get three votes, and then it's fine. In other words, not to beat this to death.
Okay, I'm gonna let other council members weigh in if they feel like it. If not, we can just take a vote on whether or not we agree with the consultants that we hired. Mr. Olbert?
I'll hold on.
Mr. Collins?
Okay, so then we're gonna have to take a vote, it looks like. Can we take them, item by item? I have a feeling this is gonna go on for a while.
Procedurally, in the past, you've, what takes sort of straw pulls on the different items that are--
So, we need a straw pull on whether Cal Fire should be viewed as a viable alternative for fire protection services by the county and the cities when considering regionalization or outsourcing alternatives. Just raise your hand if you're in favor of keeping it in. Okay, so it struck. Mr. Grocott, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Collins, do you have anything?
Nope.
Grisilli?
Nope.
Mr. Olbert?
Nope.
Can we get a motion to approve the letter with item number three struck from the record?
Item number five?
Item three--
Oh, sorry, item three in the conclusions. We were discussing item number three. Mr. Grisilli?
I apologize, I thought it was number five. I apologize, I'm sorry. Same thing, okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the letter excluding item number three from the under conclusions for the letter.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
No.
Okay, moving on to item eight A. Present to the city council for discussion and comments the redesign of the city's website.
Good evening, mayor and city council, Rebecca Manton-Hall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight, we're going to present to the, we're gonna discuss the two phases of the website redesign project and present the new homepage. This was one of our strategic planning objectives from the last strategic plan. The first phase of this project was tied into the branding and marketing campaign. In early August, a local company, Look, presented to council a new website design incorporating the city's new branding and marketing image. This included a new color scheme and an updated Look tone and feel to the existing site. And this is a snapshot of the current webpage, as you can see it today. It was launched in November. The second phase of this project includes enhancements to the architecture and the navigation to make the site more intuitive and inviting to users. This included an extensive community outreach and research campaign. As part of this phase, staff contracted with Tom Brigham to assist us with the outreach and feedback from the community. He's here tonight, and he's gonna take a few minutes to discuss the outreach process and the results. And then following that, Jasmine Frost, our IT manager, will present to you the new website.
Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Tom Brigham, and I work for West Coast Consulting Group, and I've been working with the city with their redevelopment, the web redevelopment project. I'm just gonna take a few minutes to go over the community outreach program that we did, which was very extensive. So, we really wanted to find out what the community and what the users wanted in terms of the city website. So, there was a multifaceted approach. And that was consistent, that consisted of about seven different types of outreach. We did an extensive online survey by Survey Monkey, which was completed by a hundred and eighty-five San Carlos residents, who were all volunteers. We did a focus group meeting at the Adult Community Center. We did a focus group meeting and a survey at the youth center. I personally conducted some street interviews with citizens on Loyal Street. We did in-person interviews with citizens at City Hall over a number of days. We conducted telephone interviews with citizen participants. We reviewed some other city websites to generate ideas and sort of determine best practices. And we also did some in-person interviews with key stakeholders, so this was city employees who actually update and control the website, just to get their perspective as well. And we had a variety of findings, which we incorporated into the Phase Two part of this project. One of the things that we noticed from the survey itself was that a lot of people who currently use the site are satisfied with it and could find what they're looking for. But that only came from the online survey. There was a discrepancy there in terms of what we found with the other outreach. But from the Survey Monkey, the online survey, we found that the five main reasons why visitors used the city site was information on upcoming events, parks and recreation activities, city council information in minutes, police information, and building and planning information. Now, this came from all the community outreach, so all those different elements. So, the people who are critical of the site, some major themes came up. Search and navigation were considered difficult. Very hard to find certain information, especially for schools, police, and parks and recreation. Lot of out-of-date information and broken links, which sort of undermined the site's credibility. And generally, a lot of superfluous information to sort through. I am just going to go briefly through some of the graphs which came out of the online survey. Again, this does not represent all of the outreach programs. But you can see that, again, there's this persistent theme, upcoming events, parks and rec, agenda in minutes, police information. This is, again, from the survey, a lot of people could find what they're looking for. And this is what we're really looking for, is the people who had constructive criticism. So, again, out-of-date information, can't find things, links don't work, et cetera. This is probably a little bit of an outlier, because a lot of people had minor comments on graphics, et cetera. But again, a consistent theme of search navigation, obsolete information, et cetera. That concludes my portion of the site, and I'm gonna let Jasmine talk about what we did to integrate those findings into the rest of Phase Two. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, based on the results of the external and internal outreach, a new website design has been developed. And I'll just run through some of the features that have been put in place or are being worked on. A new search engine using Google's technology is gonna be incorporated. Photographs are gonna be updated to be more San Carlos-centric. And we're working with former mayor Randy Royce to get some of his photographs. The news is being updated, it's a different style. This will enable us to put in more than just five news items. We can scroll through like a player down here. Popular links is another new feature. And basically, what that does is, it ranks the pages based on the traffic and the click-throughs. Instead of us just putting in pages or links over there, this is done manually through The tabs on the top, the navigation menu, we've redone those as well. So, we've added departments, the how-do-I services, and contact us. We've had a graphical interface for the event calendar and the San Carlos TV channel. My San Carlos allows visitors to create a website account to customize page information based on their preference. We've also, we will also be adding a mobile feature, so that people using a smartphone can view their, the website easier, and it loads faster. A mapping tool is also going to be introduced. And that's also, again, gonna be using the Google Map technology, so we can map out city parks, road closures, restaurants, and put information on the map itself. There's gonna be a kids' section that's coming up, and we're working on it, so I didn't have the design to show you as yet. And that's gonna be a more kid-friendly look, and basically draw the younger generation to the city site to learn more about the city and the services that it offers. Besides all these, just the look and feel, the city currently has over 10,000 pages. And a lot of them is, a lot of those pages are outdated information, and we've begun the process of archiving and deleting all those old information. Parks and Recreation was another popular department that people visited, and we're trying to reorganize that section to make it more friendly and intuitive for people to use. That's it, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Frost, is there any questions from the council? I just have one quick one before everyone jumps in, and then I'm gonna stay off, because I was on the subcommittee with Mr. Lewis when we talked about this. When are we gonna change the pictures to San Carlos people?
Soon. I'm just working with Randy Royce, our former mayor, and--
Oh, I was, I had to use the restroom, I apologize if you covered that, sorry. Okay, so I'll really be quiet then. Who would like to start?
I just had a question.
So, I see May 12th is the live date here?
May 15th.
I'm sorry, May 15th. So, we, May 15th, how often will we be reviewing this site? Every week, every month, every year, every decade?
Who do you mean by "we"?
Anybody looking at it from, not someone using it, but from the staff, so that we keep it current?
Right, so, one of the things--
Do we have a schedule, is I guess my question?
For certain pages, yes.
I'm sorry?
For certain sections. We would have, for example, agendas and minutes.
Sure, I understand that's gonna be constantly updated.
That's gonna be, you know, we're just gonna keep two years' worth of information.
Okay, but I mean, like, every week or every month? Maybe the city clerk can answer the question. So, are we gonna, every, I've looked at other websites from other cities, and they're so far behind, they couldn't, I mean, they're just out of, do we have the capability of--
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, we're constantly checking our site, especially with the new demo. The new pages, we've scrapped hundreds of old pages, outdated pages. And so, that was our homework, so all of the department heads have completed their homework, to bring you this new version now. And we're on track to probably monthly keep up on--
So, we're trying--
--pages fresh.
We're trying to look at it monthly, so that it's always current?
Yes and no. We can, and then there is also a feature in the content management software, where you can turn off the dates, so you can say, you can, the page can go live on a certain date, and then if it's, you know, past the due date, you can turn it off automatically.
You don't have to go into the details. The only question is--
Yes.
Will we be constantly looking at, I'm the least technology person up here, I guarantee you. Maybe, Mr. Gro, no, you're probably--
No, it's you, Mr. Grisilli.
I just wanna understand that we're keeping, since I just bought a new smartphone and moved into the 21st century--
You're ahead of me.
--and today, by the way, had to turn it back in, because it didn't work. Forget a new one, though, I got a new one. I just wanna make sure that if we're spending all this money, that we're gonna keep up on it. And my question is, it's gonna be timely, and we're gonna do it on monthly, there's a schedule, maybe I should ask the city manager. What is the, what's the deal, as they say? Are we gonna do this on, is somebody gonna be assigned, or can we afford to keep somebody assigned to keep it up to speed?
Well, there's, the answer is, there's a lot of people assigned to it. In each department, the admins, the managers--
Okay.
--all the way up to the city, myself as the city manager--
Okay.
--are constantly looking at the webpage and trying to ensure that the information is up to date, accurate, and fresh content.
Okay, I appreciate that.
You've gotta have a lot of eyes on this--
I'm just trying to make sure that it doesn't get--
Throughout every week.
Just like, it doesn't become like a report, it's done, oh, great, and then we'll come back in 10 more years, and we'll do it again.
And Mr. Grisilli, just to comment on, since I sat on the subcommittee, I go on the webpage a lot to see the changes from where we were to where we are now, is a quantum rate.
I'm sure it's made a quantum rate.
But the, it's constantly changing.
Okay.
Every day, something new is on the website, so--
I understand, I'm just trying to make sure that--
I totally understand.
--if we're gonna spend all this money and do all this, let's keep it up.
You want results?
Thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you. Yeah, I had a few questions and observations. One to follow on what Councilmember Grisilli was saying. I would strongly encourage the team and staff, if you have not done so already, to actually design the site specifically with content update in mind. And that can drive not only how accessible you make it in terms of ease of access for people to change things, because if it's difficult, or it has to go through, you know, a particular person to get it done, then that's gonna shut down the frequency or depress the frequency of updates. And it also means that you probably ought to look at aggressively pruning it, because stuff that's out there that you're not planning on going back to, it's just gonna get stale. You're better off actually having less information that you keep fresh. Question I was gonna ask, actually, stems from an experience I had using the city website on this last New Year's Eve. I was involved with, another driver clipped my car, I guess he didn't notice my two-ton Pilot, when he tried to make a left-hand turn from a right-hand lane. And I was curious as to whether or not I needed to have an officer come out to take a report, even though there was no injuries or anything like that. And so, I figured, oh, I'll go to the city website to get the police phone number. I actually ended up, I think what I ended up doing is I drilled down, and the only way I could find it was, I looked up Greg Rothaus's page, and I called his number, and it was a weekend, or, you know, holiday, and so it rolled the voicemail, and finally, at the end of the voicemail, it said, "Press zero if you want to hit, you know, go to dispatch." So, I finally ended up getting where I wanted to go. The point I'm trying to make is that, I like the idea of your hot links that kind of update based on click-through, but I wonder whether or not, if it's not too late, if we can think about taking sort of a functional kind of approach, in other words, how are people looking to use it? Why would somebody go to the website? Okay? And there's a couple of dimensions to that. One is the example, I'm just saying, gee, you know, maybe there ought to be a way to quickly get to the police or the fire department, or what have you. But another thing, too, is if, when I was listening to the presentation, if you think about it, most of the scope of the work has been how residents use the website. Okay, and that's a lot of the group that was involved with providing feedback. And there's nothing wrong with that, we hope the residents are gonna be using the website. But, you know, personally, I think there are other things that the website might be useful for as well, like business development, economic development, somebody who's thinking about where they want to move to on the peninsula. And I'm almost wondering whether or not, rather than have just one portal, or whatever the primary portal landing page is, that, you know, there's something on there that prominently says, you know, if you're, you know, "Make your living in San Carlos, click here," okay? Or, "Thinking of moving to San Carlos, click here," and presents a different slice of the information, effectively. Because those are different, they're radically different constituencies, they, by definition, are not gonna be interested in knowing when chicken's ball is gonna be scheduled, at least not initially. Okay? So, we need to provide all of that stuff, and I just wanna make sure that we don't so totally focus on the one constituency that we forget the option to leverage this as a thing to help us in our economic development, and help us in our just overall development work. But I like the stylistic changes, I very much prefer the colors and scheme and whatnot that folks have come up with, and I think it's a lot of great work. And even the comments I'm making here, if it's too late to incorporate it in this round, even if you think they make sense, then-- round, even if you think they make sense, then, you know, if it's something we can do later, that's fine. And that's the nice thing about websites, they're very malleable, you can change them basically whenever you want.
They're always under construction.
Yeah, it's always under construction. It's like, it's like Google, no software ever comes out of beta, so. But good job.
We did, we did poll even the businesses. I did send out the survey to the Chamber of Commerce and asked them to send it out to the businesses, just to get their feedback as well.
I, I'm glad you did that. That's great. You know-
And we will, we will look into-
You know, my point is actually, it's almost like you'd want to send it out to people who don't even know they want to go there.
Right.
Okay? Because I want to make sure we have a way to hook into them.
Okay. Mr. Collins and Mr. Grocott, do you have anything to add?
Just, just a comment. I really like it. It's a, it's very inviting.
Thank you.
It's a huge improvement over the last, over what we have now. And I didn't think the current one was that bad, but this is, this is very inviting. Just a couple of questions, and maybe you've already done this. People sometimes say to me, "I didn't know that that item was going to be on the agenda. Nobody told me about this and that." I didn't know that, when I was on EDAC, they said, "Well, we didn't know you were going to talk about, you know, this particular business plan." I, I would assume that there's going to be a very easy way for someone to say, "Well, what's coming up?" Or are there going to be some, somewhere where it says, "Upcoming agenda items for the following boards and commissions"? I mean, is that something people can find very easily?
Yes, we can, we can do that.
Okay. And that, and then the other is, I noticed that there was a, I don't know where it is, if it's under home or residence, but sometimes when I'm, if I'm going to go visit a city, I want to know a little bit about the demographics. I want to know goofy things like, what's the average temperature, and what's the elevation, and how many people there, and how many restaurants? Is that, that kind of thing built in?
Yes, we will be incorporating all that stuff. It, actually, it is there, but again, it's, it, there's so many pages, it's kind of buried.
Right.
And it's, it's not easily accessible.
All right. It's, it's funny, unless I say, I really like it. I'm, when I get to a site, I like to just snoop around, and so you'll be hearing more from me.
Thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
So the, just a few questions, and I think I'm going to repeat what some of the other council members asked you about, or whatever. And I'm going to do that just because, to show that there's interest in that. What Mr. Albert said about slicing it differently, I actually took your survey, and that was one of the things I responded to, is try to imagine yourself as a new resident coming into town, and so now suddenly I need to know, you know, where's City Hall? How do I get trash service? How do I hook up my, you know, I, I think our site should be a one-stop thing, so I move into town, and I want to know, how do I get my water turned on? How do I get my PG&E turned on? How do I get my, you know, all this stuff that you want to know when you're first into town? And I appreciated the way Mark said it, is to have something on there that might be a slice that takes you through that easily, so that you can go in and click on this, and you get to Recology, and you, you know how to get in touch with them, to know when trash pickup is, and all these things that, that have to happen when you first come to town. And I also think that same thing, if you're a new business coming to town, and you just get, you're just getting started, you know, how do I, you know, other than, yeah, yeah, exactly.
I just set up a roadmap for them to-
Right.
-to get there.
Right, exactly. The, the other comment I had, similar to Mr. Collins, when I, I've, you know, on a can, I don't do a lot of traveling, but when I do travel somewhere, I like to be able to go to some website, and usually I'll go to the city's website in the area that I'm going to, to get an idea, what's this place look like? Where is it I'm going? And some do a good job of it, and some don't. You know, you get these pictures, it's like, okay, you have a Hampton Inn, that's great, you know? What else do you got? So something that could give, and we've got a great little town. I mean, people say that all the time, and, you know, in our interviews tonight, people talked about, "I came here because of the great downtown." And I think if our website was effective in showing that off a little bit of, you know, what's the downtown look like? What do some of our parks look like? What are some of the, you know, there's some great panoramas in San Carlos if you get up on Britton area, Bob's neighborhood, and look back down, you know? There's just great things here. And I think for our website to be able to show that off in these depictions, I was glad to hear that we're going to get away from some of these generic-
Yeah.
...things and get into some more.
That was, that was one of the number-one complaints, or when we did the one-on-one interviews with people, they said, "Get rid of these pictures, we don't like them, we want something more San Carlos-specific."
And the last question I had was, and this was one of my comments, my feedback comments when I did the survey, was the, the map that was there was static. Is it going to be interactive?
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay, great.
And that's, that's part of our mapping tool that we are going to use Google's technology to do that. It's going to make it much more interactive.
I, I just have one last funny little historical comment, is I remember when I first got on council, you know, email was just coming out and being used, and I-
It's email.
Email, you know, what's email?
Hence the AOL address.
That's right. And I remember mentioning, you know, people were really talking about, "We want more from the city, we want more interaction, more information," and so forth. And I mentioned to city staff, and Brian Moore talked to me about it, just the whole idea of doing a website. And I forget how many years ago that was, and the, the comment, I remember Mr. Moore said, "Well, we would like to be able to do that, it's a matter of budget." But he must have been excited about it, because very quickly after that, we, we were one of the first cities, I believe, weren't we, to, to have a website, not just on the peninsula, but in all of California? So we've come a long way.
Mr. Albert, you have something to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention an idea that was sparked by listening to some of the comments that Councilmember Grocott had said. And I'll preface it by saying that, that one would have to be careful about content management, because I wouldn't necessarily want, you know, people other than city staff putting things on the website. But with that caveat, you know, we are, the, the site, to some extent, also is a reflection of our community. And there are various elements of the community that I think would probably appreciate the opportunity to pump content into the site. I'm thinking here, obviously, the local school districts, some of the, the other community groups. When Mr. Grocott was talking about, you know, "I'm a new resident in town, how do I get things set up?", the thought that clicked in my head was, I have a funny feeling that the local Realtors Association probably either has all that information or would love to be able to provide it as a, as a service. So without making this project snowball into too big a thing, I would encourage staff to look at opportunities to leverage resources beyond what our own staff resources are. If you can do it, if you can maintain the control that you're going to need, but still leverage those external resources, you might end up with a more robust and more frequently updated site.
If I may just comment on that, we are looking at a public calendar functionality where nonprofits and organizations like the Rotary and Lions Club can put their events on the calendar, and then it, it's, it's on our servers, but we don't control it. They would have access to put that information in. It's, it's still a work in progress, but there is something that's possibly coming up.
I think that's, that's definitely a great component of that. I'm also just thinking of, I know, for example, that Craig Baker would probably love to be able to update the material that's on our site related to the San Carlos School District, and would probably be willing to commit to maintain it for us as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ross, the only thing I have, first of all, great job. I noticed you took a lot of the comments from the subcommittee, and it's great that you're getting the full city council right now. I appreciate the support of making two pictures on the faux website right now. That's well done. And then also, one of the comments that came from the subcommittee is, "It always has to be 75 degrees and sunny."
Yes, that's right.
That's all I got for you.
City of good living.
Great, great job. So thank you very much. That's all we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think we should also, we should also put a video out there of Councilmember Grisilli leading people into the 21st century using their smartphones.
Yeah, I don't think it's broken, I think it was user, user damage.
I don't say that, but yeah.
It's going to be one of those nights. Thank you, Ms. Ross. We're on now, item 9A, which is a public hearing, consideration of adopting an ordinance, adding chapter. Before you stand up, Mr. Moore, I don't think we're going to need that. 827 to the San Carlos Municipal Code prohibiting the use of polystyrene-based disposable food service ware by food vendors. We've had this report twice now, so I don't think there's a need for a staff report. Are there any follow-up questions from the council, as this is, will be the third time we're discussing this?
Any what?
Follow-up questions. We will do discussion after public comment. So any questions for staff? Seeing none?
I just, one that's in the background, it does say there was significant support among the restaurants for the, for the city to move ahead, and I just thought, I just wanted to comment on that. I think a more accurate statement would be of those who responded to the survey.
We can change the staff report to reflect that.
And I, I think it should be, you know, so the staff report's correct, that those who were surveyed and responded, there was significant support.
But that's a valid point. Is there any public comment? I don't have any speaker slips. Okay, seeing none? Is there any discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion-
Oh, we have to, sorry, I opened the public hearing now, we need to close the public hearing.
Right, right. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Maybe from the last century, but I-
See, you're quick on, you're quick on the paper.
That's really came on the paper.
There's no-
It's Robert's rules.
Well, yeah, yeah, there's no app for that, though. So is there any discussion? Mr. Grocott, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, there is one thing in the whereas that I was troubled by, because it says, "The city council finds that polystyrene-based single-use food service ware consistently constitutes a substantial portion of the trash and litter found on streets, streams, and so forth within the city of San Carlos." And I remember I asked about that at the, at one of the meetings where we talked about this, and there was no actual data or anything more than just talking to people who maybe have gone out and picked up trash, and I always forget that word.
Quick cleanup?
No.
Oh, yes.
That became the word of the night last time.
Anecdotal.
Anecdotal, thank you very much. So there was, there was nothing more than anecdotal, anecdotal evidence on that, and so I think to make a statement that seems to go beyond, doesn't seem true to me, that that is the case. And the whereas below it, "The city council finds that effective ways to reduce the, the negative environmental impact of disposable food, food service ware include using compostable materials and so forth." I read that, and I thought, you know, I agree with that entirely, and that's why, as I stated at the, at one of the other meetings where we talked about this, I, I don't see the need to do an ordinance to prohibit it, its use. I see more a need to do education. I don't know that we've ever done any kind of education program to the restaurants to make them aware that other materials are available, other products are available for, for this kind of thing. And, you know, I, I take note that Mr. Collins made a comment in one of the newspaper articles where he was saying, you know, "We're kind of late to the races on this one because the industry's changed." And that's, so that's, you know, I'm not again, I, I don't like polystyrene, I never have. It's a difficult material to, you know, dispose of, get rid of, whatever. And I love this new stuff that's come out. I just don't see the need to do an ordinance prohibiting it, because I think the, the other stuff's so good, if we just make people aware of it, we'd be done with it. And from the survey that Mr. Moore did, I think there were, we had, I think, 130 restaurants in town, 10 of them still use the stuff, and eight of them were willing to stop using it, so it's-
I believe that's of those that responded, right, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, of those-
That's correct.
Of those who responded. So I don't know, I just don't, I don't see it as being a real huge issue where we need to do an ordinance like this.
Okay.
I just don't.
So those are Mr. Grocott's comments. Does anyone want to strike anything from the ordinance? Or, I mean, this is the third time we're seeing it, so I don't know if we just want to try for a motion for the whole thing.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1442, ordinance of the city, city of San Carlos, adding chapter 8.27 to the municipal code prohibition of the use of polystyrene-based disposable food service ware by food vendors.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
Before we vote, yes, I'd, again, I want to, so we're clear on procedures, maybe not for this time, but for the future. I had asked the city attorney last time, you know, these kind of things, this is a public hearing that we've just had, I'd be very careful about how we present our positions as council members, and, you know, I'm not trying to pick on the mayor, but there was an article, a couple of articles in a couple of places online where statements were made that, you know, "Let's ban it all, we've waited too long, we're behind the eight ball on this one, and we should just do it." So that's giving a predetermined result. How does that sit when we have a public hearing and then we vote on something?
Especially since this is the third public hearing.
Well, the distinction on, on this particular item is that it's a legislative act.
Okay.
And so the, the issues of quasi-judicial review don't apply on a legislative act. The analogy I always use on this to describe it is that people who run for office sometimes actually run on a plank to change a law, and, and so saying that in advance of running, or in, in the context of running for office or stating a position is okay with legislation. The rules are different for, for evaluative review of, of a particular application that's factually based for an entitlement, for example, or something of that nature.
So if I may paraphrase and put in more layman's terms, if, if it's a law like this is, it's okay to give an opinion in advance, but if it's something that's a review of property use or something like that, then it's inappropriate to give your, an opinion that's too strong.
Yeah, I'd, I'd put it, I mean, that's generally correct, Councilmember Grocott, but I would put it in, the, the, the concept of quasi-judicial proceedings is keeping an open mind, waiting to hear all the facts before you make a final decision, and, and that's, you know, concept of fairness and a concept of avoidance of bias and a due process concept. So every fact, every-
Can you give us, excuse me, can you give us some examples so that we can? I can think of one. I'm thinking, for instance, when we were, when this council years ago was wrestling with the Palo Alto Medical Foundation application, it was, it behooved us not to say anything one way or the other to newspapers or the public, that, you know, "I'm pro-PAMF" or "I'm opposed to PAMF." But if it were something that had more to do with, you know, something like this, then it's okay to say something.
Well, I would say that it's, each, each application for an entitlement is, is factually different. So the idea is, again, to keep an open mind on, on that type of an application. PAMF was a very complex project. It had legislative and evaluative or entitlement components to it, but, but you, fundamentally, you're correct. You want to keep an open mind and evaluate all the facts before making a decision that's on a quasi-judicial. The rules are different for legislative acts like the polystyrene ordinance before you tonight.
Just one more question, if you'll bear with me. Then entitlement, what do you mean by that term?
It would be, an entitlement would be something like a, it's, it comes in different ways. Sometimes it's, it's a, like we recently, the, the antenna appeal that you had recently, that was a use permit, that would be like an entitlement.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, if I may, I'd just like to follow up because I'm, I'm, I want to make sure I'm clear on the understanding. This is something, as a new council member, I've talked to staff on a number of occasions about. I, I tend to think of this a little bit differently, but I think we get to, I get to the same place. The key point in my understanding on the quasi judicial review items is keeping an open mind. Now, I could have, or a council member could have an utterly closed mind and never say a word about it, never a vouch afe in opinion, never say anything, have an utterly closed mind, and technically, that would be a violation of, of, or they would be, they would be running afoul of keeping an open mind on a quasi judicial item. In other words, the expression of, of the opinion is not itself the issue. It's evidence that the mind may be closed ahead of time. And, and I'd just like to get a little bit of clarification about that because frankly, on any, I, I just think that on, on many issues that come before us, I mean, even in a court of law, I don't expect a judge to not have an opinion about something. I expect a judge to remember that he has an opinion, but remember his duty, or her duty, is to keep an open mind. Am I drawing too, too fine a nuance, or?
Well, no, I don't think so. I think the, I think the, the concept is, people are entitled to have opinions and use their life experience to, to evaluate whether it's an application or a legislative act. What we have to do is have a fair and open mind in considering the facts and wait till you have the, before making up your mind, having, considering all the evidence and information.
And just to interrupt, I don't want, I mean, I understand this is a, we're talking about a quasi judicial matter, that's not, this isn't a quasi judicial matter.
Granted, this is-
This is the second time now that this has been brought up, and this is the second time, Mr. Rubens, you've had to explain that I wasn't over the line with what I said. So, can we just move on with the topic, then? Thank you.
Anyway, I made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution certifying the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the San Carlos Hillside Trails Plan and adopting a mitigated measures monitoring program all in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. No, it's eight. Oh, I didn't change my watch.
Good job.
Speaking of 21st century technology- Yes. No, I use my cellphone, I use my watch. I thought we were doing good. My watch updates itself.
The one we want, is it?
I thought we were doing so good.
This is the one we want.
Watch stopped. Couldn't figure out why. That was all.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Doug Long, Parks and Recreation Director. Just to give you some background on this particular project, in 2007, the city council adopted a San Carlos Trails Connection Plan with the idea that the trails in San Carlos would be contiguous, that hikers would have a more vibrant and interesting walk if they could walk from one location to another unimpeded. Towards that end, we decided to create a master plan to figure out a way to connect those particular parts of our trails. And as we started to investigate that process, we realized that having a grand plan may not be the best way to approach this. We, the city council had identified it as a capital improvement project and allocated $150,000 for that master plan. But since trails plans can go stale, particularly with the environmental review, it was suggested that we look at segments of those particular connections and deal with those on a case-by-case basis. So, what we did was we identified four connection points that we would want to go forward with immediately. One of them was creating additional trails in Big Canyon. We wanted to look at creating additional trails in Eaton Park, which included, by the way, a new trail access point. And we'll talk about that when we review the plan itself. But I do want to let you know that we sent out information to the neighbors, and this , this connection, this new trail access point would be at Tremonto and Appian Way. So, we took the neighborhood and sent them out a letter and invited them to be part of the process. We knew that it might affect them. So, they did get a letter inviting them to be part of the process. And the other two was a trail at Devonshire Canyon. And just to explain that briefly, Devonshire Canyon, we do have a trails easement, except we're a little bit landlocked there. We have to get permission from property owners that are adjacent to Devonshire Canyon, who own Lot G. And we just need a small segment of Lot G to access an existing trail easement. And finally, some council members are familiar with the, the access point to Pulgas Ridge. That's property controlled by Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. There is a gate at the end of Los Vientos, and there's access at that point. There's been a request to provide trail access at the foot of Los Vientos. However, as we went through this process, and there's information that was provided to, to the council, that indicated that we don't have standing to determine whether there's access there or not. We are not the lead agency. We don't own that property. That's something that Mid Peninsula is going to have to pursue. And folks that are interested in having an access point at Los Vientos need to communicate with Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District to see if they can get that done. With that said, I would like to introduce Steve Noack and Isbe Fleishman from DCNE, our consultants on this project, who are here to present for your consideration the Hillside Trails Plan Environmental Review, and that's, that'll be first. And secondly, the Trails Plan itself for council adoption. Now, after each presentation, we'll be happy to answer any of your questions. So, I'll turn it over to our consultants.
Good evening, Mayor Klein, council members. My name is Steve Noack. I'm with the Planning Center, DCNE. And I'm just going to go over real briefly the initial study mitigated negative declaration that we prepared for the Trails Plan. Kind of bringing the cart before the horse here, in that Isbe Fleishman, the project manager, will provide more detail on the, the plan itself after I discuss the ISMND. Essentially, we did the environmental review on about 1.5 miles of trail alignment, and the, the document itself focused on protocols. In other words, actual construction protocols that would be implemented with each segment of the trail as construction occurs. So, by looking at protocols, we were really able to avoid any potential environmental effects. We could demonstrate how by implementing these protocols, there would be no environmental effects. We, and here's just a brief map of the, the trails, and as I said, Isbe will provide more description of that. We prepared the document in the summer and fall of 2001. We held a 30-day public review period. We received five comment letters. And as a result of those letters, we did make one change to the initial study mitigated negative declaration. And we, instead of relying just on biological protocols, we took the biological information and actually made that a mitigation measure, just to ensure that the protocols would be implemented as construction occurs on the future trail segments. And I want to, for everybody to note, especially the city clerk, that we have one error here. This should be city and not district in this mitigation measure. So, in the resolution, it should be shown that it says city and not district. So, the, the protocols that are now biological mitigation measures really look at any potential special status species, including birds, bats, and the dusky-footed wood rat. We would do pre-construction surveys to ensure that there would be no impacts should any of those species be found in the construction areas. And again, very detailed mitigation measures on riparian habitat, avoiding impacts to creeks, sensitive vegetation, and really to protect existing vegetation. So, that's, that's really it on the ISMND. Pretty straightforward, no, not, no areas of controversy, and all the impacts can be addressed at the time contracts are let or designs are done for the actual trail segments. So, my recommendation would be that Isbe comes up and does her presentation on the plan before we answer questions or the council takes action on the-
Is that okay, Councilmembers?
We, just to make sure I get, the, the idea is, you want to adopt the mitigated negative dec first and then go on to the-
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're going to have to do 10A first. So, we actually do have a public comment as well for 10A. So, before we get there, are there any questions from the council about consideration of adopting a resolution, native deck?
Yes. First of all, good job, by the way. As a new council member, this was one of my first introductions to CEQA, and it was an excellent educational lesson in going through it, although I think I probably burned up a lot of staff time against getting questions answered. I just have one, actually, simple question. I've been hiking many of the trails in, in the area for many years, and I have never seen a dusky-footed wood rat. And I would really like to see a dusky-footed wood rat. Do you have any advice on when's the best time to observe them?
I do not, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It could be that when we do the, the, we look at the natural, the natural diversity database, which highlights any findings of the species, it may be that one has not been found in this area for a long time, but it's still within their range, and at some point ones were seen, so.
I'm pretty sure they're still active in the area, just because there seem to be a lot of nests around. Anyway, that's obviously not germane to the particular topic, but thank you.
Okay. Mr. Grisilli?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Okay.
Mr. Grocott?
Okay, that's it. So, we have public comment, item 10A, Jim McLennahan?
Excuse me, 10A and 10B, I'm just going to comment on one area. So, should I wait till the whole thing is completed?
You can comment both times. We have you listed for 10A and 10B.
It's just relating to one area.
Okay, that's fine, you can go for it.
All right, okay. All right, Mayor, council members. Jim McLennahan, resident of San Carlos. My main comment is on the Tremonto Drive, Appian Way access point. I'm probably a lone wolf with a negative feeling about it because it's right across from me where I live. I'm on the corner of Appian Way and Tremonto Drive. Since 2009, off and on, I've talked to Mr. Long about concerns about seeing somebody go up into that area on a deer trail, and with some tools and cutting brush, and talked to Guy Wallace. They assured me nobody was going to be doing anything there. And then, until about a year ago, something came up that they were having a meeting up there, and then all of us in the area would be notified about what was going on. Well, I was never involved in any of the planning meetings, and the only times I've gotten notification is when it was going to come up before the council for what we are here for tonight on January 23rd. So, I'm just concerned, number one, about the parking, increased noise, trash, fire safety, brush cutting removal if they're building the trails up there. And if, if this all goes through at that point, the duration of time with the trail building when they have that access point, how it will be signed. Because what I read in through the documents, that the parking allowed in the area, and it's on an area, page 43 of the draft parking program, Eaton Park at Britton Avenue, they've identified two spaces. Eaton Park at Tremonto Drive, they've identified five spaces, with a note that additional parking could be provided on both sides of Tremonto Drive and Appian Way. So, the question I have there is, Appian Way is a, it says Appian Court, but it's Appian Way, that the right-of-way on Appian Way is too narrow to have parking on both sides, number one. Tremonto Drive parking, I guess you could just have added the whole length of that short end of the street there. Not that I would be happy with it, but most of the people are probably hiking, are going to walk there, probably. But I just want to at least express my concern about it, and also with the entry point, getting into the area there with, you know, fire and safety, because I've lived at the, at that property many years, and I have notified the police at different times when there have been problems in the evening, when I see people congregate, so, and in the daytime. So, I'm just worrying about the fire danger.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
That's my concern.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. We'll address your questions. Mr. Long or Mr. Noack, do you guys want to address the gentleman's questions or concerns regarding fire and public safety issues, and also whether there's parking?
Yes, and I've had a number of conversations with Mr. McMillan about this project and our, our, our plans to have an access point at that location. One of the things that we hear often about creating access points is the fear of fire. There's also fear of nefarious activities, and there's, there's a number of things that people are concerned with. The problem with that is there's really no data to, to substantiate those claims. There are access points throughout the, throughout the Bay Area, particularly in the peninsula, and in our city alone. And there is no data from the police nor fire to support that there's any more incidents of fire or any more incidents of nefarious activities at these connection points. So, we understand that the neighbor's concerned. We will certainly keep our eyes and ears open, and if we hear any complaints or things that are out, out of the ordinary, we will certainly address those.
Okay.
I have a question to that effect.
Yes, Mr. Grocott.
I'm, I'm thinking in particular of the access to Big Canyon, and there's a, there's a house there that actually faces the trail. I mean, their front door faces the trail. Do we ever get any complaints from them on activities in that area? Because it's, you know, for that one, it's on Britton, it's very accessible, very visible, and it, you know, it's, the reason it's called Big Canyon, there's big flat canyon base area right there with some, I noticed we recently put in a new bench right there. There, so there's that home, and then across the street is the access into Eaton, and you have to go up some really steep steps, and it goes right past somebody's house. So, I'm wondering, do we ever hear from either of those two residents about any complaints?
Nothing has been, ever been brought to my attention.
Okay, very good.
And to jump in with Mr. Grocott, saying that those weren't the spaces that I was worried about. There's a bluff at the top of Eaton Park when you come off of, I believe it's Greenbrier. Do we know how often we get calls from the police? Not that I'm saying that I know anything about it, but do we get calls from the police about high school kids up there?
I don't have that information. That would be a question for our police chief, and I see he's no longer around. I have not, and the, the chief works closely with me on those instances, particularly in, in areas of activities in our parks, whether it be open space parks or, or developed parks. And I have not received any information that would lend me to believe that there would be increased or any activity up there that would be concerned.
Okay. I mean, things have changed. It was popular 14 years ago.
Yeah.
So, does anyone have any other, anything else? If not, we can have a discussion or make a motion. Mr. Grocott, do you have any?
No, I, I-
We will entertain a motion.
We're here to make a motion on it.
Yes, so they found the resolution. Where did this, where did we put it?
That's what I was trying to find.
Where did we put the, the-
10A.
Front end, front back end?
Isn't it the back of 10A?
You couldn't find it either? Well, that's good.
Well, that's good. That's going to be an issue.
Thought it was, maybe not.
Can't you just make up on the fly? We're going to have to edit tonight's video to make it look like we know what we're doing up here sometimes.
I'm going to try it from the options available.
All right.
Just that we adopt a resolution certifying the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the San Carlos Hillside Trails Plan and adopt a mitigation measures monitoring program all in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second, and the resolution number will come later.
Okay.
14.
14.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 10B, consideration of adopting the San Carlos Hillside Trail Plan.
Good evening, Mayor Klein, council members. I'm Isbe Fleishman. I'm project manager with the Planning Center, DCNE. And Steve already gave you a great introduction to the Trails Plan. I'm just going to give you a little bit more detail. So, the plan was prepared by Design Community Environment, the Planning Center, as, in collaboration with WRA Associates, as our biologist on the project. And the purpose of the plan is to ensure safe and enjoyable share, trail protection, oh, sorry, trails, and protection of existing habitat, drainages, and water quality. It's really building upon the great trail system the city already has. Oops, sorry here. The trail identifies over a mile, 1.55 miles of new trails. That includes 0.35 miles in Big Canyon Park, half a mile in Eaton Park, and 0.7 miles in Devonshire Canyon. In addition to identifying the trails, the Trail Plan provides guidelines for the design and construction of the, of the trails, as well as construction protocols for these trails, and, as well as future trails. So, guiding the alignments that we identified, as well as all future trails. So, all of the trails shown on this map here, sorry, I'm having trouble with the clicker, all of them are either in designated park or open space, public or private. In general, characterized by steep terrain, and the dominant plant communities are oak woodland, grassland, and mixed chaparral. There are several watercourses, minor watercourses, generally ephemeral, with defined streams and banks, which the trails' alignments cross. The plan does categorize the hillside trails, again, this is only for hillside trails, as either hiking trails or accessible trails. Hiking trails having grades of 20%, up to 20%, and potentially requiring stairs and bridges for those watercourses. And accessible trails having, being less challenging trails, lower grades, and meeting ADA requirements. Because of the natural terrain of the hillsides, there are limited opportunities for accessible trails. Let's just look at the Big Canyon, in Big Canyon Park, the trail alignment. Let's see. There is a, one accessible spur we identified coming from the parking lot, or, sorry, from Britton Avenue, and, as well as a- Britton Avenue, and as well as a hiking trail. And this is the .35 mile hiking loop. It's generally a forested area with grasslands. There's a couple stair crossings and stream crossings. Next is Eaton Park directly across the street. The Eaton Park Trail also has several bridges and steps. And the Tremonto Drive access point is located right up here, which was discussed earlier. There are design guidelines included in the plan that specify that, sorry, trails should be at least 50 feet from any occupied dwellings where possible. And where that's not possible, landscape, berm, and fences should be provided as a buffer. In this case, it is possible to have a 50-foot buffer. And Devonshire Canyon is, here's the .75, .7 mile trail. It connects to Vista Park. And Lot G is outlined in red. And this is the parcel that would either need to be acquired by the city or an easement acquired through this parcel in order to connect this trail to Vista Park. The design guidelines adjust the trail setting, basic trail design, drainage crossings and bridges, slopes, stairs, the kinds of materials, and signage. And as Steve outlined earlier, the construction protocols, construction protocols adjust biology, cultural resources, hydraulic resources, and air quality. And in general, they're designed to promote safety, resource protection. They outline protocol surveys where necessary, best management practices, agency consultation, again, where necessary, and permit acquisition where necessary. Just a brief overview of the contents of the Hillside Trails Plan. Any questions?
We'll get into questions. Does any council member have any questions? Mr. Grokot?
I don't know if they're really, excuse me if they're not directly for you, but I just, there's things that are coming to mind and I wanted to ask about them. One of them, Mr. Mayor, would address perhaps this gentleman's concern, and so this might be for the city manager, is especially when trails are initially opened, I don't know if we would put it here or we would just, where this might come into play, but just some kind of policy, I guess, to monitor the entrances to these trails, especially when they're first opened and especially maybe at nighttime by the police department, that that would be part of their nighttime patrol to check these areas out, to make sure that there's not loitering going on or nefarious activities going on. Is there any, where would we introduce that?
Mr. Grokot, and I'm sure that the chief can do that. I don't think that has to be in there, but just speaking from, again, not that I have any knowledge of this.
Yeah.
But the police officers constantly sweep the trail system and the parks at night. So I think we could just probably make a recommendation for them to do that at the new trails, the new trailheads, is what you're talking about, correct?
Yeah, and that's what I'm suggesting, especially when the trail first opens because it, we wouldn't know the interest of it or what the, what kind of activity may or may not be going on there with any history because there is no history. It's brand new.
Absolutely. I think we'd pass those comments on to the chief and the department, letting them know that the council would like any new trail to be monitored, you know, initially. I don't think you'd necessarily want to see that continue long-term if there weren't any, any problems.
Okay.
Because they can move on to other problem areas in the community. But yeah, I think your point is duly noted.
Okay, very good. And then the next question I have is just as we open up trails and construct them, what kind of policy or opportunities do we have for naming these trails? And maybe that's not your bailiwick. Somebody else might speak to that or?
Mr. Long, and let's try not to tip him off because he's sitting in the back.
Okay.
We do have a naming policy that we have for our parks. Generally, it's tied to money that's given for the construction or improvement of those particular areas. In this case, we're using volunteer labor and there's not really a tremendous opportunity for naming rights.
I think that's not what he's, what Mr. Grokot's talking about. Mr. Grokot, I think is talking about an honorary naming, like a Wheeler Plaza, which was named after our first police chief, and other things like Rossec Park. These things were named after important St. Carlins as opposed to a monetary donation. I think that's what you're talking about, right, Mr. Grokot?
Are you talking about our trails in general or trail segments?
Either or.
Either or.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's something that we can develop a policy and bring it forth if you were interested.
Very good. Yes, I would be.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Long, I'm sorry, through the chair. Mr. Long, I'm sorry, but I have to ask you about Los Vientos, even though it's not part of this. So assuming Mid Peninsula Open Space District decides that they want to open up Los Vientos, and maybe this is a question for the city attorney, if not even the city manager, are we going to have any control over that?
Well.
In other words, the street in front of it? To Mr. McClennan's point about parking and other things?
Well, from my understanding, yeah, parking is not part of the SEQA review.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, we're passing, we're passing, I don't want to say passing the buck, that sounds really bad, but, oh, what the hell. We're passing the buck to them so we don't have to have a bunch of folks that live there sit here tonight. My question is, are we going to have some control over that if Mid Peninsula says, "We're going to open that up"? Or are we going to be hamstrung and say, "Oh, we don't own the property, but we own the street. We own the street, so..."
We do, the street is part of the city's street network.
Right.
And there's actually, as I recall, but I don't remember the exact title to the grant, there is a access strip across that property that was put in at the beginning that was dedicated to the city. So there are some, there is some ability, without getting too fact-specific, for the city to control access at Los Vientos.
Okay, so if the Mid Peninsula Open Space District could say, "We're opening it up. Here we go." And we could say, "Mm, slow down. We got to talk about it."
We would have, well, because of the SEQA process, we'd also have the opportunity to comment through that process. But there's some, there's some issues with the strip that's there. It's about a foot wide. It's on the title reports. There's the fact that it's a public street.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's SEQA. Those are the three things.
Right. And the only point I'm trying to make here is that we're not, by putting it in some other, and it's fine, it's their property and that's all well and good, but I don't necessarily want to cede control of that opening just because someone else has it.
And if I may make a quick point, I don't think we're ceding control. I think what we're saying is we don't have the control to begin with.
Understand. We don't have the control to the opening, but we have control right outside the opening. That's what I'm trying to make sure.
And you'd be a major player.
Pardon me?
You'd be a major player in that analysis with Mid Pen, even though it would be their decision.
Okay.
Because, for example, you on the street, you could always build a fence.
Another gate.
You know, with no gate on the city property.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure that there's local, because I know what's going to happen if we don't have, if we've given, giving up our, we're not giving up our rights we don't have them to begin with in the opening. I just want to make sure that we're taking care of that responses to the folks who live in that area. That's all my question is. Thank you, Mr. Long. I didn't mean to belabor this.
Mr. Long, to dovetail on what Mr. Grisilli said, I think it's, and I don't want to disagree with what you said because I understand the concern, but I think it's a little inaccurate to say we're passing the buck. Mid Peninsula passed the buck to us because they didn't want to deal with the neighborhood, correct?
That's how it initially, the conversation initially began.
But I'm just saying that we're passing it back.
Well, no, we're, I think we're staying in the fact, it's not our property. And if they open it up, I just don't want to make it appear to people that we're like chickening out or something. I'm more willing to have the conversation about Los Vientos, but that's like having a conversation about property that's not ours.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. I was just trying to make sure we had rights.
Yeah, no, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Your point is well there.
Okay. Um, other, Mr. Collins, do you have any questions?
No, I have one suggestion if we name a trail, since we have a veteran hiker in this community. One of the trails, maybe we call it David's Trail.
So he didn't catch the "let's not tip him off because he's in the back of the audience" remark. Wow. Anyways, Mr. Grisilli, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Mr. Olbert?
You know, when we do, when staff does bring back the naming policy, I wasn't going to mention this, but since Councilmember Grisilli was, not Grisilli, excuse me, Councilmember Collins was suggesting something, I wondered whether or not there might be something here where we could dedicate something to Omar. So I'd ask people to think about that, too. Although I have to admit, I think he would have preferred to have been on his Segway on the trails, which might have been a little difficult to navigate.
We'll have to put a Segway parking spot in front of one of them. I have no questions. Oh, actually, Mr. Long, I do have a question. We've been having a very fun conversation about this. So in the report, it talks about to meet the requirement that we did as a city for one mile hiking trail for every thousand people, we need 28 miles of trails. And I hear the laughter because people see how far off we are than that. Wouldn't it make more sense for us to come to a bit more? And I'm all for pie in the sky stuff, but 28 million trails in the city would mean we need a lot of switchbacks.
Yeah.
When are we going to get a realistic number that we can actually set a goal for, that we can try to attain? But, I mean, 28 miles of trail in this small of a community is pretty ridiculous.
Right. We need to revisit that and set a different standard.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. So we have public comment. We have tons of public comment. First up is Bonnie McClure, followed by Bill Olson. Well, Tom, I mean, four.
Bonnie McClure, San Carlos. Your Greenbrier question, I believe that that is a PG&E service road up there. That's not trails that we've ever built. The, the other day I was hiking on Windy Hill. Some of you have probably hiked that trail. And I noticed that the trail was built as Sierra Club has built the trails in Big Canyon and Eaton with the, with the, going with the slope with the narrow trail sloping outward, downward, so that you don't get the erosion that you do with a wide trail that's square cut. You get water down the middle of it. I noticed at Windy Hill, they had widened out the trail at a viewpoint, and that's exactly what had happened. The water had gone down. There was, there was a crack. There's erosion down the middle of the trail, where the rest of their trail was very good. It blended with the hillsides. I'm hoping that the volunteers that you have building these trails will continue that instead of cutting a wide square cut, which is, it might look good the first month, but after that, it's a desecration to the looks of the trails. I wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Bill Olson, followed up by Catherine Teenan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm here in support of the Hillside Trails Plan. I'm an 18-year resident of San Carlos, home on Crestview Drive, okay? Enjoy hiking trails in the Big Canyon Park, Eaton Park, okay, in through, in through that area. The 75 degrees sunny weather, 365 days a year, you know, you can't stop but get out. Looking at some of, I enjoy geocaching. Geocaching is a sport I'm into. Looking at some of the reports that come out of Big Canyon Park and especially travel bugs that are hidden in Big Canyon Park. They're finding them all around the world, okay? And they have traveled there from San Carlos. So we all know and we do have a place on the map. And I think our Hillside Trails will support that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Olson. Catherine Teenan, followed up by Jim McClenahan.
Catherine Teenan, I chair the Trails Committee in town, and this has been a long journey. Many years of politicking and working through the process, so I really urge you to move this process forward swiftly because we would like to get some of these trails built in, at least before our volunteer trail builders get too old to build them. I actually don't think that 28 miles of trail in town is too high a goal to set. I think we have a lot of open space that has been designated open space and purely by virtue of past politics where a lot of open space was ceded back to private entities, largely because the city didn't want to pay taxes and maintenance on it. We should be asking these people for trail access, getting easements on the properties. Devonshire Canyon is a classic example. It truly, truly is a treasure of this community and should be enjoyed by a lot more people than a few people with a few very expensive houses up there. And there are some great trails. But regardless of all that, I think I urge you to move forward on these very, very small stretches of trails. We need to get feet out there on the street and on those trails to enjoy those great panoramas that we have in San Carlos. It'll be a huge, huge plus for the community. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I've already mentioned what I said before, but the only thing is I missed was if this goes through and it passed, you know, just, I was curious about the duration of time on the trail building, say at the area of Tremonto Drive and Appian Way. And I didn't want to see that area turn into a corporation yard while they're building trails and stairs because there's a number of stairs that have to be built and some bridges.
That's a good point.
In that area. So I'm just concerned about how long, if that's going to be turned into a corporation yard type setup at that area or not, but you don't have the answer, I'm sure, right?
No, we're going to get you the answer right now.
Okay.
Mr. Long, after this gentleman is done, if you could give us the answer to his question, that'd be great.
No, that's the main question I had about that. And then also the volunteers, where do they come from and who supervise them?
And we'll have that answer for you as well. Thank you, sir. Mr. Long?
Of course, the volunteers would have to make that estimate, but I, and I have our master trail builder here, and I would suspect that it wouldn't take any more than a couple of weeks for that particular connection point from Tremonto to the existing trails up there.
It's actually in days.
Yeah, so, you know, it can be done in days rather than weeks.
And then the majority, from what I've been told by, again, our master trail builder, the majority of the volunteers, they're just going to be essentially pack mules, correct?
It could be two or three days. And it doesn't matter.
Okay. So, yeah, the majority of the volunteers will just be dragging in the material.
That's right, yes.
Yeah. Great. Okay. Are there any other comments from the council? Do we want to have some discussion?
I just, just a couple of comments. Number one, I know in, over in Belmont, they use volunteers to build a lot of trails back in the Water Dog Lake area. Mary Stevens, who's a mountain biker, basically, he and his cohorts wanted some access in places they go mountain biking. And so they built trails and they did a darn good job of it. So it, that is evidence to me that, you know, volunteers can do a great job. And it does get done amazingly quickly. There's some tools that they use, I don't know if you use these, but the, there's a, there's a little tool that they use that cuts these trails pretty quick and then they knock back the brush and there you go, you got a trail. In most cases, there are things that they have to do for steps and retaining walls and so forth, but it goes pretty quick. And it's, I think, a successful process. So, and the other comment I just wanted to throw out there is my experience, I use the trails a lot. And going out to various places, I find that, you know, parking, the only place I find where parking is, ever becomes an issue is Edgewood on certain weekends along Edgewood Road.
Right.
And the other is if you go in on Edmunds Road and you access some of the trails back there that the county has, it can get a little packed up. But on our trail system, generally, there's virtually nobody there. So it's, it shouldn't be an issue to this man's question, I hope. And I think we will respond. The police chief's back in the room now. If it becomes an issue, I think we'll respond to it. And then the last comment I had, Mr. Mayor, is this, as the one speaker who's, Ms. Teenan, Teenan, they put a lot of work in on this, and so I hope we as a council can recognize them when we move on with, you know, after we've approved this and schedule some time for some recognition at one of our other council committees.
Mr. Collins, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anyone else?
Would you like to make a motion?
Okay, before we get to that, Mr. Grokot's right. I think the proper time to thank them is when we will be cutting a ribbon, I imagine, on these trails. And I don't imagine that's going to take a very long time. And hopefully, the entire council will come. And then the only, the other thing I would like to say is credit to the people behind this plan. I think the reason we don't see a lot of traffic and a lot of parking is because we're trying to build a trail system that people can access from their homes so they don't have to drive like you do with Edgewood and other communities. And I think that's the great thing about this, is you can walk out your door, go a couple blocks, and you're on a trail. So if we can do a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the hillside trail plan.
Second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Moving on to item 10C, consideration of adopting ordinance number 1441 authorizing amendment to the contract between the City of San Carlos and Board of Administration of Calpers, the California Public Employee Retirement System. Seems to be our constant conversation. It just continues.
Yes, it does. So Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the final ordinance amending our contract with PERS and establishing a third miscellaneous tier or at two at 55. This new tier was agreed to in the last round of labor negotiations by all of our labor units. Council approved the first reading of this ordinance and the adoption of the resolution amending this contract on February 13, 2012. So following your approval tonight, the tier will become effective for new employees on or after April 23, 2012. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1441. An ordinance of the City Council, the City of San Carlos, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of San Carlos and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Moving on to item 10D, consideration of fiscal year 2011-2012 mid-year budget adjustments and adoption of resolution to adjust fiscal year 2011-2012 general fund and non-general fund expenditure budgets.
Okay. So tonight, we'll review and discuss the fiscal year 2012 budget. This mid-year budget report will focus on the following key issues: an update on the status of revenues and expenditures within the 2012 general fund revised budget; a recommendation for general fund appropriation adjustments; an update on the status of expenditures within the 2012 non-general fund revised budgets; recommendations of appropriation adjustments to Capital Fund 25. In addition, I will update the council on the impact of the state actions and the dissolution of the RDA in housing as a result of AB 26. And finally, we'll discuss the two-year budget planning process for the next fiscal year. So to begin, we'll look at the general fund revenues. General fund revenues are projected to be higher than budget by approximately $443,000 or 2%. Of this, sales tax revenue is projected to be on target based upon receipts received to date. Property tax revenue is projected to be 4% or $357,000 higher due to increases in the secured and unsecured tax rolls. Transient occupancy tax or hotel tax is projected to be 11% or $25,000 higher based on the past two quarters' receipts. Vehicle and move is projected to be 4.5% or $100,000 lower. This is due to SB 89, which shifted more money to the state this year. Charges for current services include fees for services charged by all departments, including recreation, police, and planning fees. This revenue category is projected to be lower due to the mix of fees related to the PAMP project. However, licenses and permits revenue is projected to be higher due to the value of the construction of permits related to the PAMP construction. So moving on to expenditures. Overall, the general fund expenditures are projected to be 2.5% or approximately $700,000 lower than budget. Savings includes salary and benefit savings, primarily from the timing of filling vacancies in the fire department, as well as vacancies in public works. Operating expense projections include the $600,000 reduction in the contract with the sheriff's office and other projected savings. This is offset by the additional expenditure increases I'll go to in a moment. And one-time costs budgeted for this year included an assumption for a fire vehicle purchase totaling $100,000 that's not projected to be purchased this year. The changes requested tonight have been incorporated into the projections I just showed you and can be funded from the projected savings mentioned before. These changes include the following: increasing building professional services by $30,000 for the PAMP outside plan check; increasing public works professional services by $20,000 for a traffic consultant related to the PAMP development project. These two increases will be directly offset by the increases in the development revenue; increased community development by $43,700 for expenses related to economic development through the end of the year. The community development department will be assuming many of the duties formally handled by the RDA, and this requested increase will fund the activity through the end of the fiscal year; increased public works professional services by $45,000 to pay for additional street and signal light repairs; and an increase for public works professional services in the amount of $40,000 for engineering augmentation services. In November, council approved a contract with CSG Consultants to provide services due to the vacancy of the public works director and the city engineer position. The majority of the contract was offset with salary savings, but this requested increase will provide the necessary funding through the rest of the fiscal year. Should council approve the recommendations requested tonight, the ending general fund balance as of June 30, 2012 is projected to be approximately $16.8 million. Under GASB 54, the Government Accounting Standards Board, Statement Number 54, this balance is made up of the following components: non-spendable items or portions of fund balance that cannot be liquidated, such as prepaid's or advances to other funds; restricted amounts for use by outside agencies; committed amounts by council actions such as the emergency reserves and the strategic property acquisition reserve; and assigned balances to pay off unfunded liabilities and to fund infrastructure improvements. The total of these restricted reserves is projected to be $13.3 million, leaving an unassigned or unrestricted projected balance of approximately $3.5 million at the end of this fiscal year. Moving on to the non-general funds. Non-general fund expenditure categories include the sewer fund, other revenue programs, capital funds, NPDES, workers' compensation, and liability insurance. In 2012, these expenditures comprised approximately $17.3 million, or 31% of the city's total expenditure budget. The 2012 projections represented here include the additions and transfers from the RDA that are being requested tonight. As noted in the staff report, staff is recommending three appropriation adjustments to the General Capital Fund 25. The first is an increase of $25,000 for the ADA Transition Plan Capital Project. As part of an approved capital project from last year, the city is working with an outside consultant to perform a self-evaluation of its current ADA compliance. This additional request is to fund updates and revisions to existing policies, as well as public outreach and education that is required but was not part of the original scope of the contract. The second is an increase of $100,000 related to emergency retaining wall repair. The public works department was notified that the retaining wall at 22 Vista del Grande had failed. It's estimated that the repair cost will be $100,000. Since this was not an approved capital project, staff is requesting council approval to fund this emergency repair work. And finally, an increase of $31,100 for crosswalk beacons. The Traffic and Circulation Commission has approved a number of recommended improvements to the crosswalk at the intersection of Alameda and Alma as a result of safety complaints. One of the key recommended items was the installation of this flashing beacon. Due to the safety concerns, staff is recommending that the project be approved before the fiscal In addition to the requested additions, staff is requesting the approval of the transfer of six previously approved capital projects from the redevelopment agency into Capital Fund 25. All of the projects listed here have substantial funding sources other than the RDA, including grants and traffic mitigation fees, and can be moved into Capital Fund 25 with no impact to fund balance. If council approves the requested capital adjustments and transfers, we're projecting an ending balance of $2.8 million in Fund 25 at the end of this fiscal year. This fund balance can be used to pay for new capital projects that will be discussed in detail as part of the capital budget study session later this spring. As part of the state's 2012 budget, the state approved AB 26, which eliminated redevelopment agencies as of February 1. This has had a significant impact on operations and the financial stability of the city's general fund. The primary revenue of the RDA was property tax, which is received twice a year in December and April. The April payment will not be paid to the city, but instead will be paid to the county, and the city will receive only enough to pay the items listed on the enforceable obligations payment schedule, or the EOPS. After February 1, the agency is not authorized to make any payments which are not listed on the EOPS. For the rest of this fiscal year, all expenses related to the wind down of the agency will be made through the successor agency and will include the expenses listed on the EOPS that was approved by council previously. These include salaries and benefits, legal fees, and debt service obligations. Currently, the RDA funds economic development activity that cannot be reimbursed through the EOPS. As noted early in this report, staff is recommending to continue to fund the economic development programs in the amount of $43,700 out of the general fund through the end of June. A full-year budget will be developed and submitted through the normal process for fiscal year 2013. The greatest impact to the general fund will be the loss of the overhead allocation from both the RDA administration and the RDA Housing Fund. For 2012, it's estimated that this loss will be approximately $500,000, since we were able to recognize the allocations from July 1 through January 31 or the end of the agency. However, in future years, the general fund will lose approximately $1.3 million per year in overhead cost recovery. AB 26 has also had an impact on the RDA Housing Funds. On January 23, the city elected to have the housing authority assume the assets and the duties of the former RDA Housing Fund. A key difference between the dissolution of the RDA and the RDA Housing Fund is that while all the RDA assets are controlled by the Oversight Board, any properties of the housing fund will remain with the city, and once received, will not be dispersed to other taxing entities. There are currently a number of legislative bills addressing housing that may further define the role and funding of the successor housing authority. RDA agencies are also not allowed to enter into new projects. There are currently 12 approved projects in the 2012 adopted RDA budget and two additional unfunded RDA projects. As noted earlier in this report, staff is recommending the transfer of six projects with substantial funding outside the RDA to be transferred to Capital Fund 25. The remaining eight projects that were expected to be fully funded by RDA and RDA Housing have lost their funding under the provisions of the law. As a result, it's recommended that these projects be moved into the Fund 25 unfunded list, which will be reviewed and considered as part of the capital budget study session later this spring. And these projects include the following: the Pulgas Creek Bank Repair, the Wheeler Plaza Development Project, the Facade Improvement Program, the Branding and Marketing Program, the Industrial Road Underground Utilities District, the Industrial Road Drainage Study, the Cherry Street BMR Housing Project, and the Holly Street Industrial Road Widening New funds have been established in the general ledger for both the successor agency and the former RDA Housing Fund. The fund balances for the RDA and the RDA Housing as of January 31 have been transferred into these new funds. The total obligations listed on the EOPS are greater than the available RDA balances. As such, in following the guidelines of AB 26, staff has encumbered the entire fund balance to pay for these future obligations. In order to help cover the costs of being a successor agency, the county will reimburse the successor agency a minimum of $250,000 per year. Moving forward to the next fiscal year, at the end of February, staff sent all departments' budget instructions and their two-year base budget for the period ending June 30, 2014. There are three significant changes for the new budget. The first is the reintroduction of the two-year budget cycle. Past work has provided a foundation for a structured budget and enabled the city to move back to a biennial format. The second is the introduction of the program-based budget. Departments have already begun the task of defining their programs and performance measurements. For the first year, they'll report their programs in a narrative format. However, over the next two years, a full measurement and reporting system will be implemented. And finally, staff will need to prepare recommendations for the impact of the loss of the RDA, since this will have a negative impact to the general fund. The factors and assumptions included in the base budget for the next budget cycle include property tax increases of 2%, sales tax increases of 3%, assuming some economic recovery, salary and benefit costs in accordance with all employee contracts currently in place, and operating expenditure increases of 2%. Staff is preparing a budget study session with council in mid-April and final budget adoption in early June. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council members? Okay. Not seen any. Do you have something, Mr. Grocott?
Well, I'm feeling frustrated, and I'll tell you why. When I went through my council packet, this particular item, which I was looking over here at Mr. Collins, he's got a 10D on his, mine goes from 10C to 11A. Now, materials here, it just wasn't tabbed. So when I went through my packet, didn't see the tab, didn't go over this. I'm also frustrated because of the, the things that are going on with the RDA and the amount of money that seems to be impacting the general fund. I think you said 1.3 million as a negative?
Yes.
And I don't know what the detail is on that. He also mentioned about the housing agency, and I don't know, for me, I see a lot going on here that, you know, almost 10 o'clock at night to dig into, try and understand. I don't know, maybe no one else has any questions or would like to have a good, strong study and discussion of this, but to me, I look at this and I, and just what's going on with the RDA and the whole thing, and I could see having, quite frankly, a special study session on just this particular item. And maybe we'll do that in advance of our budget hearing. I don't know, but...
Mr. Mayor, I'll just jump in. I believe the plan is to do that in April. The reason we don't have everything is not, everything's pretty fluid now with, I mean, the Oversight Board hasn't met. There's a lot of balls in the air. Or, Mr. Malby, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, sure. I think, I think those two items, while there's definitely a strong linkage between the mid-year budget report and the changes in RDA, we've really been, because, you know, we're still trying to understand the landscape and understand what the impacts are and how we might mitigate them within the organization. This level of operational change doesn't occur often from an outside legislative force. And, you know, we're doing the best we can. It was really our desire to have a plan for the council to discuss and consider in advance of adopting next year's budget, and we've made a couple of minor triage issues, I think the $47,000 or $43,000 in operating costs to just keep the economic development portion kind of limping along, and that's just sort of the basic office costs, while asking Mr. Sewicki and Mr. Seve to develop a more comprehensive plan for the council to look at in terms of what economic development might look at in the future. In terms of the capital projects, those were really very straightforward. Most of the, most of the projects that we're recommending you move into Fund 25, or all the projects we're recommending you move into Fund 25, are like 95%, 99% in most cases, funding from outside grant sources. So they were in RDA, but some of them didn't even have any RDA money in them. So we're just recommending you move them. Others are going to need to be pulled back so that the council could consider them in next year's budget process alongside other capital projects. So in the past, you kind of had two pots of money. So when you were looking at capital projects, you'd put on your RDA hat and you'd say, okay, well, these are RDA projects, and we have so much RDA money, and these are general fund projects, and we have so much general fund money, and next year, they're going to all be blended together and be general fund projects. So we'll try to have a comprehensive, we could certainly have a study session to just sort of provide more information if you're feeling like you need an update at the council level on the RDA status, independent of the mid-year budget.
Yeah, you know, I can understand, you know, you're, especially if you missed it, studying this, but let's get specific. Specifically tonight, we're only talking about moving $178,000 on one side and $156,000 on another side.
That's correct. I mean, typically it's...
So just to let you know, this is not, we're not moving any huge amounts of money tonight. We're just doing mid-year adjustments as we've done in the past.
Yeah, I know.
And then the rest of it, I certainly agree with you. If we can need a study session or something to talk about this, I'd be happy to do it. But specifically tonight, I think we're, we're just doing this much, and it's just more of an operational thing to get us through the mid-year adjustment. So just to, I'm trying to alleviate perhaps some concerns that you have, that we're doing an awful lot tonight. I don't believe we are.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Grocott, actually, I understand exactly how you feel, and that was, in fact, why I spent about an hour and a half with Rebecca, pardon me, Ms. Mendenhall, a couple of weeks ago now, going through stuff. One thing that, and the reason I did that is because there has been a very significant sea change, and therefore it'd be natural to say, why isn't there a big problem that we're having to adjust? And one of the things that came out of my discussion with Ms. Mendenhall was basically what I think of as a variance analysis, saying, yes, you know, here was the big negatives, the big positives, and here's why they net out to a relatively small number. I know in my case, part of what was tripping me up is that I had the number of $1.3 million disappearing in mind. That's actually the impact next year. The impact this year is substantially less, right? In fact, the impact this year is...
The impact this year is about $500,000.
Right. It's about $500,000. And I wish I had brought my earlier notes, and I know you alluded to them as you're going through here, or cited them. What are the primary big offsets to the $500,000? In other words, it's reasonable to assume RDA dissolved, therefore we should have been whacked by half a million dollars, but the reason it's not affecting us that much is because...
Getting more sales tax and property tax.
Right. The revenues are higher than were budgeted, the expenditures are lower than budgeted due to salary savings, and we have the $600,000 reduction in the sheriff's contract.
Right. That was, that was probably, thank you for reminding me, that was probably the single biggest thing right there. So it may be something, it may be helpful going forward when we do these kind of reports to actually, because I don't know if it's actually in the packet of material, actually do that kind of, write out the variance analysis.
Okay.
Just as, as, on a cash flow basis. Because I understand exactly where you're coming from. It's, I know there's a big change that's happened, why am I not seeing, you know, people scrambling, going, we have to fix this, we have to fix this, and that's why.
Okay, are there any other questions from council? Seeing none, I have no public comment slips, so we will move to council discussion. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, sorry. Just, not so much discussion, just a point I wanted to make as we were going forward talking about our budget planning for next year. I'm sure other people have read as well some of the dialogue that's been going, discussion that's been floating around involving CalPERS, where they were talking about, gee, they really, I'm paraphrasing, gee, they really ought to raise the contribution rate for, that they impose upon local agencies, but they're, they may not be doing it because they can't afford it. That set off a warning alarm in, in my head. I mean, that's probably one of the silliest reasons not to do something that I've ever heard of. I mean, if it's really costing more, it's really costing more. Kicking the can down the road isn't going to necessarily solve the problem. I know we have the, the contingency money set aside, or discretionary money set aside to deal with some of these kinds of issues, but I just would ask staff to think about, see if you can second guess CalPERS a little bit. You know, if, if they, if the cost really are going up, we really ought to think about some way to park money aside to deal with that.
And Ms. Menon Hall crunched the numbers today. I really swear, you're just sitting on my shoulder sometimes. We had the discussion, and what they're actually doing is talking about lowering the assumption, and that goes to committee tomorrow, so I think the staff is getting a grasp on what each quarter percentage point will have us, so we're hoping for a, a report at some point on that. But yeah, they're definitely being forward-thinking because it's going to come one way or the other.
That, that's exactly right. What, what concerns me is they think they're doing us, they may think they're doing us a favor.
But they're not.
They're actually not. They're actually making, doing a bad thing to us.
Yeah, it costs us one way or the other, either now or later.
Right, and it costs us more if we don't know that it's being costing us.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Just for my own comfort, because I did miss this, and Mr. Olbert put it pretty succinctly how I'm feeling, but I'm going to abstain on the vote.
That's totally understandable. That's understandable. Can we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2012-15.
15.
Whoa. Assistant City Clerk, I didn't know.
It rubs off, you know, I sit next to her.
Good job.
Resolution of City Council, City of San Carlos authorizing adjustments to the fiscal year 2012 general fund budget and other fund budgets.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gersily?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Abstain.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Moving on to Item 11A, consideration of adoption of the City of San Carlos Strategic Plan. Ms. Menon Hall, how much are you going to need for this?
10 minutes.
Let's try to make it five. We're at 10 o'clock, and I predicted 8:30, so...
Okay.
Sit your watch back.
Happy to oblige. So for your approval tonight is the city's updated strategic plan. On February 29th, this council and staff met for the 13th time in a day-long facilitated strategic planning session. The purpose of this was to review and discuss the city's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, update the city's vision statement, update the three-year strategic goals, and create new six-month objectives. As a result, the following vision statement is before you for approval. By 2017, the City of San Carlos will be a vibrant family and business-friendly community, admired as a great place to live, learn, work, and play. The city's mission statement was reviewed but was, remained unchanged and is shown The city's core values were also reviewed and also remain unchanged and are reflected Every three years, the city updates its three-year goals. As a result, two new goals were added this year to enhance economic development and promote and achieve environmental sustainability. These new goals are added to the three goals continued from the past three years to provide effective and sustainable public safety, maintain and enhance the infrastructure, and plan for and implement long-term financial sustainability. Once the goals are defined, council and staff work together to create new six-month objectives. This strategic plan includes 35 new objectives for the next six months. For the three-year goal of provide effective and sustainable public safety, there's three items listed here, I can read through them if, if you like, or, okay. And three more items related to public safety listed here. Under the goal of maintain and enhance facilities and infrastructure, we have eight items with two future, the five are listed here, and the three additional with the two future items are listed here. For the goal to enhance economic development, there are five items, three of them are listed here, and the following two are, the two that are continued are listed here. And under the goal of plan for and implement long-term financial sustainability, there are seven items, the first four are listed here, and the following three are listed And under the goal, under the final goal to promote and achieve environmental sustainability, there are also seven items, the first four are listed here, and the last three are listed And that completes the review of all of the 35 new objectives. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, we'll go to questions from the council. Do any council members have any questions? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. I have one public comment card from Glenn Galenew. Glenn, am I saying your last name right?
Jolino.
Jolino, so, so not even close. Jolino, Jolino, okay, I'll work on that.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you all know, I attended your council retreat, and I must say I was quite taken by the fact that during the process, I, I can't help but say that I got the sense that the objectives were predetermined, and I happened to notice that staff was also voting. And to the degree that Mr. Mayor and members of the council, that you're directly held accountable to the public by our vote, and staff is not, this concerns me. And again, I can't help but say that I came away more with the feeling that you covered staff's objectives, not objectives that you as a council have come up with on your own. And that being said, as a citizen of the community, that concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. We'll start with discussion, and I'm just going to bring up a point of clarification. The way I should do, for those, most people don't go to our strategic plan retreat. The way it works is the five of us, and I believe eight to 10 staff members, go into a room. It's a public meeting, we discuss objectives, we discuss goals, we discuss vision. We do come to a consensus with our staff, so staff is involved in that process, but when it comes to actually voting and implementing, that's 100% on the city council. Staff has no vote tonight, so we can remove or add items as we choose. A lot of these things are brought forward by staff, but just as many are brought forward by city council members. So it's a little, you know, it's a little give and take. We want to have the experts in the room who are actually going to be doing these things to get their way in on timelines and other options like that. I for one can point to one goal that I specifically brought in myself. So I think it's, you know, while I agree staff is very heavily involved during the actual strategic plan, tonight the decision's being made, and that's, that's all on the council, as the staff has no vote tonight. Yes, Mr.?
I understand the need for staff to be there to answer questions and to advise us whether or not to add the resources to keep the agenda, but I directly observe that voting, and I can't raise...
And that, that's, that's absolutely correct, but it's not implemented until it's voted here on council. So that is just to put it on, to move the, the option forward in the council, as Mr. Grocott's brought up, and we will discuss at our team building, or whatever we're going to call it, workshop, changes to the, the strategic plan, but the strategic plan idea has been something that the council has supported for six years now. So let's go to discussion. Mr. Grocott, you seem to, do you have anything to add?
Well, yeah, I'll just tag on to the public comment, and I think some comments I made earlier when we were looking at another item. I am frustrated with this process. I think there is a, you know, for staff versus council at these meetings, we're outnumbered, council members are. I know in my group, when we were going over the goals, I don't know that any goal that I mentioned came out of our little group. All the goals that came out of the group I was in came from staff. And, and so, you know, that's just an example of how it, how it happened with the group that I was in. I don't know if council members are prepared tonight to actually review the goals that are listed here that, that came out. You know, it's, it's on one of these page, on page five, identify three-year goals.
That's exactly what we're doing tonight.
Okay, I mean, I'm, for me, I'd be happy to look at this list and, and look at some other things. I'm not entirely enthralled with the goals that, that came out of the strategic planning.
Okay, do you have any additions you'd like to see, any subtractions, and we can see if any council members agree with you?
Well, things that I find important are bullet item two, the expand of recreation facilities. That was mentioned even tonight when we talked about trails and so forth, and we don't have enough, we don't have enough open space for our population. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that it ought to be a realistic figure, but I think it's something that we ought to focus on and have as a goal, and it fits with our, the vision that we talked about of being a destination for where people want to live and, and work, live, and play, is I think the way we ended up putting it. The idea of preserving community character appeals to me, and the idea of, there's an item here about resolving ground pollution problems, and while we do, we've got this thing about economic sustain, or excuse me, environmental sustainability, which to me is, is putting things in terms of, terms that are thrown around today a lot, I don't particularly care for that term of, and the way it's been put. I think, and I've said before, that if we're going to deal with environmental issues in San Carlos, we ought to deal with environmental issues in San Carlos. And so having a goal that talks about something like, this one's very specific about resolve ground pollution problems.
We have an objective that says, report on pollution problems in San Carlos and provide options for resolving them to the city council for action. So is that not...
Well, I guess what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is that the, the title that we have about, let me find the goals that we actually have. Are those on the front page?
It's promote and achieve environmental sustainability.
Yeah, there you go, promote, right. See, I would like something that's, that's more San Carlos-specific and not put in terms of, you know, everyone's talking about environmental sustainability today. It's, it's the buzzword for the, for the day, and, and I don't even know what it means, quite frankly, when we, you know, achieve environmental sustainability. I don't know if it is achievable. Promote, you know, good environmental stewardship and, you know, deal with pollution and those kind of issues, yeah, I'm all for it. I think that ought to be a goal. To me, that's more San Carlos-specific.
Okay, so to try to get a grasp on what you're, you would like to see us have a discussion on, you want to change your three-year goals, can you give me specific examples of which ones you want to pull out and what you want to add in, or do you just want to add in?
I would like to change promote and achieve environmental sustainability, like I said, to be something more...
Do you have an idea on what you'd like to change it to?
Yes.
Okay, what is that?
I said it earlier, to promote environmental stewardship and address pollution, well, not just groundwater pollution, but yeah, pollution, and I'm trying to think what the other term is that's used, not trash, but you know, the...
Litter?
Yeah, litter issues, exactly.
Okay, are there, just a straw poll, do other council members would, would like to change promote and achieve environmental sustainability to what Mr. Grocott mentioned?
I'm not seeing any taking on that. What else do you have, Mr. Grocott?
And the, the other thing that I think's important here that's, and maybe they, the two could be combined, is the idea of expanding our recreational facilities or looking at our, in the next three years, that we take a, a solid look at our park and rec facilities, our trails, you know, we've already seen something on trail systems tonight, but looking for opportunities and, and actually doing some planning for improving or increasing what we have for...
We have two objectives in the maintain and enhance facilities and infrastructure. One is to report to the city council on potential collaboration with local school districts to increase recreational opportunities. The other is to present to the city council for consideration a civic facilities maintenance plan involving renovation or replacement of city parks and buildings. So what more would you like to see?
To look at opportunities for actually purchasing land or doing land swaps to increase our park areas.
So you don't think maintain and enhance facilities and infrastructure is enough? You want it, I mean, because you're, what you're doing is, I mean, I understand that's a three-year goal, but it's hard to put objectives under a goal that's that specific?
I don't know that it is, but...
Well, you're talking about land swaps and, and buying, purchasing land, those are, what would the objective under land swaps and purchasing land be? It would be explore land swaps and purchasing land.
Well, no, it would be to enhance our recreational facilities.
Yeah, through the mayor, if I may, I, I think there's just some terminology confusion. I think for this one, you're talking about creating a new six-month objective under the infrastructure, the three-year infrastructure goal, related to what you're talking about with developing a plan to, you know, acquire additional land or additional acres and expand parks. Is that, am I, am I hearing that correct?
Yes, you're hearing correctly.
That's, that's an objective.
Probably six-month objective.
Yeah.
Or you can do it like a few of them in the plan, where maybe you don't want to assign a date to it right now, but you add a plan to it. If you, I mean, if the council has an interest, we could work on some language, or you could wordsmith it tonight. If you don't want to wordsmith it tonight, we can kind of take the spirit and bring it back in the next plan for you to look at next month.
I suppose, I guess, Mr. Mayor, you know, I've, I've sat on this council a long time, and we have talked about opportunities, and they are, they exist, where there's, there's potential land swaps we could be looking at and pursuing. There's even property acquisition opportunities that I don't think we're necessarily focused on, and there's also opportunities with the rail corridor that we don't pursue, we don't push, and, you know, and I'm not talking about the development areas, I'm talking about the rest of it that sits there and, and is not a beautiful sight on the El Camino in our town, putting it kindly. And, you know, we've talked about those in the past. I remember talking about those when Ms. Doherty was on the council and Mr. Davids, and it never gets anywhere. And so that's why, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to somehow word it and have it in our goals, so we actually start pursuing something.
I completely understand what you're saying, Mr. Grocott, but you have to give us some wording so we can decide whether or not we want to put it in. That's what I'm asking for, is you are asking to put in objectives, but you're not giving us anything to really, I mean...
Not?
Okay, so you first said it was a goal, and now it's an objective. Your objective is to...
I said it was a goal, and the city manager made it an, an objective.
Okay, so either way, let's, let's say it's an objective, just for, so we're just, so we can actually have a discussion about it. What you're saying is you would like a study on possible land swaps and land acquisitions to, to enhance, or to expand our recreational facilities. Is that right?
Yes, something to that effect. And I, I don't want to be the only, you know, I'm, I'm trying to throw this out for discussion. We, this is the whole thing about, we don't have this kind of discussion at the, at the retreat, and now we're trying to do it at 10:20 on a Monday night, so...
Well, I think the whole council's willing to have it, we're just trying to actually have it.
Okay.
Mr. Olbert?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I actually agree very much with, conceptually with what Councilmember Grocott is saying, and to a certain extent with what the public comment was. That was what, the basis of my comments when we were... That was what the basis of my comments when we were talking about the general subject of what we might do at a team building exercise, and I said I'd like to do more than just team building. To me, what's, what was missing from the strategic planning session, it was not that it was a flawed session, it's just that the discussion I would like to have seen take place first would involve the five of us, I personally feel, I'd like to have the city manager there as well, to in fact, with staff present to provide input, but to actually come up with the three-year goals and basically have a smaller group decide that, okay? Because those are the strategic things that influence the direction that staff is going to pick their goals from.
You mean their objectives?
Their objectives, right. And I, I think I understand where Councilmember Grocott is coming from, having sat through the process. Any objective that doesn't have a sort of natural rhythm of like a six-month period of time, it's almost inevitably going to fall on the floor, okay? Fall on the cutting room floor. In the last, it gets promoted to being a goal. So that's another element of something I was hoping that we could talk about is that, that staff needs to have focused objectives. I think the idea of having focused objectives that staff reports on is a great management tool. But I think the council needs something more, more than just that, which is to talk about, should we be looking at land swaps? Maybe, maybe we can't look at, just to pick that as an example, maybe we can't expect to get a report back from staff in six months on land swaps, but that doesn't necessarily mean we shouldn't be considering it, okay? So now, having said all that, I actually come to a slightly different perspective for tonight than my colleague, Mr. Grocott, does, because I'd like to see us have that discussion, whether it's the end of this month or someplace in the not-too-distant future. I'm not terribly happy necessarily with some of the goals that we have crafted here in front of us, but I'm willing to go along with that because I think we need to talk about making a process change. And I'm willing to say, let's have that discussion, figure out how we want to change the process and then use a new process going forward that will address more of the concerns that we have. So that's where I sort of part ways a little bit rather than tinker tonight.
This is a discussion? I could agree with you on that. I could go along with that. I do have some items, Mr. Mayor, that, go ahead.
As long as they're objectives, because what I'm gathering, and I can gather from some of the body language of my other council members, is that we're going to have an up or down vote on this, and we could talk about your objectives. But the discussion about changing the procedure, well, I think will be a major part of what we're going to do in March. So if we can get through this six-month, we know next, well, we're in March now, we know this month where you're going to have a very long discussion on how we want to see the strategic plan go from there. And we can have discussions about staff involvement and about how we do our three-year goals and all of that. It just makes more sense to do that at that time.
Okay, now, let me, I wanted to go through some things quickly, you could tell me what to do with them.
Mr. Grocott, I apologize.
You got it.
Through the chair, I'll make a motion that we extend the meeting to 10:45.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any opposition? Okay.
Okay. Some discussions I had with the city manager prior to the strategic planning session and even some things that I had talked to you about, to use Mr. Olbert's term, fell on the cutting room floor.
And just to put it out there so it's fair, Mr. Grocott, I apologize for not having the lunch, that was supposed to be on the agenda and it got left out.
Oh, I know. Yeah, no, no problem there. But the, some of the things that we had talked about was, that I was hoping would end up on a future agenda of the council through the strategic planning process, because that's how you had put it to me. A procedure, to discuss the procedure for getting items on the council agenda, both for the public and for council members.
That was going to be one of the highlights of our lunch, and again, I apologize because it got left off the agenda on accident.
So we need to figure out what we're going to do with that and how we're going to deal with it. Whether it goes into our strategic planning grid, I don't know.
I think that's one of the things we'll discuss in March at that venue.
Strategic planning itself, we've already agreed that we will talk about that. We were going to look at our ethics code of conduct, ethics and code of conduct that, again, you know, I think that was first transcribed when Ms. Doherty was on the council, so it goes back quite a few years, not to keep referencing her for necessarily, but they happen to be a fact. And then I had talked to the city manager about something that I became aware of recently, which is the commissioners, some of the commissioners having a bit of an ad hoc meeting, and I understand some council members in the past have attended. When I heard of it, I was invited, I was going to go, as it turned out, the evening I was going to go, the owner of the home, the commissioner, didn't show up, so it didn't happen. But I was troubled by that and I, that those kind of meetings are going on, and I wished to have a discussion about that at the council level, and I was hoping to get that through at strategic planning and.
I'm confused what was troubling about that, I'm sorry, I just, I'm not following.
Well, that our commissioners would, you know, two, I guess less than two from each commission.
One from each, yeah.
Whatever it is, would meet together and discuss items. I am troubled by that. I'm not prepared to talk about it necessarily tonight, it's not on our agenda, but it is something that I know has been happening. And like I said, when I found out about it, I talked to the city manager about it, voiced my concerns, and it was something that, when we were talking about having the lunch, I thought would come through the lunch period, but again, we didn't have that. So those are some items I had. I also, as you know, I had asked to have some discussion from the dais at some point about climate change and the different science that's coming out on that.
And with all due respect, Mr. Grocott, some of what you're saying, some of it, again, and was the fault of myself and the staff who put the agenda together, we screwed up on not putting the lunch on, and that was a total mistake and it was, and I take responsibility for that, that should not have cleared me without that there. But when it comes to some of these things you're talking about, you are implying that they're not getting put on the agenda because they're not getting discussed or they're not being brought forward. They're not getting put on the agenda because council members don't want to discuss them. There are certain things that you want to talk about that the rest of the council doesn't want to discuss, and this objective is reflective of what the majority of the council wants to talk about. So I think that's where there's a little bit of a disconnect.
Well, I don't know that that's necessarily true because we don't have a procedure for getting things on the agenda that's clear. So if we, if we address that issue.
Here's your chance, give me an objective about climate change and we'll go down the row and see how many people want to have the debate. And if they, if the majority of the council wants to have the debate, it'll be an objective and you can put it under whichever one you want. Environmental sustainability would make the most sense. You can give us the language for an objective and we can talk about it as a council if we want to put it on or not. This is a perfect opportunity.
Okay, I would like to have that discussion. We're doing all the policy we are on climate change and greenhouse gas initiatives and so forth, based on a report from Mr. Mora in May of 2007, when he, in his staff report, referenced, for example, the inconvenient truth movie of Al Gore, which, you know, there's been a lot of debate about that movie and discussion at different levels of government all around the world on that, and yet that's one of the items that was in the staff report upon which we were supposed to be basing our, our actions regarding climate change.
Okay, so to paraphrase, you want to have an objective that by, and we don't have to talk about the date, by whenever, and this would be a city council, because it's policy, the city council will have a discussion to debate the, I don't even know how to, to debate climate change essentially.
Well, I would put it differently. I would say that we would have on the agenda at a future meeting, a presentation from both sides, because we've only ever had somewhat of a presentation from one side, being Mr. Mora presenting material in a staff report back in May of 2007.
That's from our staff, who picks both sides?
Who picks it?
Yeah.
Well, staff could, I suppose, find people who are, you know, we had here standing before us back in January, two members of the public who, one is a fellow from Menlo Park who, you know, is an ex, a scientist on climate, you know, could come and speak from one angle and we could have somebody come and speak to us from the other angle, maybe get somebody from Eklley since they seem to promote this material.
So to try to get to an objective, so by, and whatever date, the city council will have a presentation reflecting both sides of the climate change debate?
Yes.
Okay, are there other council members who want to have that discussion at a city council meeting?
Can I ask an open question, Mr. Collins?
I'm happy to have the discussion, I just don't understand the point. I mean, if, if it's related to some policy that we're pursuing, then I'm glad to have the discussion. And maybe the perfect time to have it was when we renewed our membership in Eklley. Might have been a great time to have a recognized legitimate spokesman of either side. I think what we got that night was a display of a lot of angry people who had a lot of statistics that, while they may have been valid, I don't know that, we didn't have any way to verify it. So if we're going to have the discussion, fine, but I would like to know how does it relate to whatever policy that we are implementing or discussing implementing that has a direct effect on people of San Carlos? Otherwise, we can go to the coffee shop and have the.
Mr. Grisilli, Olbert, do you have anything to add? Or do you want to have the discussion? Where are you guys' heads at?
No.
No, you don't have any comment or no?
No, I don't want to have a discussion, so.
Okay.
We've discussed, pardon me, we've discussed, you know, this, as the mayor said, we talked about these items and if people want to come and, never mind, I made my comment.
Mr. Olbert?
Okay.
I go to enough meetings.
That particular topic of discussion, I don't feel a particular, for a whole bunch of reasons, I don't feel a particular compelling reason to have.
Okay, and I'm going to agree with Mr. Grisilli and Mr. Olbert, I believe when we run for office and we go out and we give people our opinions, they vote on us based on what we believe in. And I know in the last election, we had three out of three candidates run on an environmentally sustainable policy. There wasn't a single candidate who ran on a non-environmental, and they use the word sustainability, a non-environmental sustainability policy. So I think you're finding the majority of the council tends to side on these issues in one way, and I understand your frustration, Mr. Grocott, because you don't, you have a different perspective, but the rest of the council doesn't. And sometimes we just don't like getting way down in these issues where it's just going to turn into this big fight and a big spectacle and we just, some of us believe in what we're doing.
Well, I do want to make a comment to answer Mr. Collins' question, which is, are we making any policy based on, on the science, so-called? And yes, we are. I mean, even just approving money spent to catalog our greenhouse gases, there's a lot of things that we do. If we're going to be looking at green building codes, that's all based on global warming science. So there's a lot of things that we do. Making a walkable community is based on global warming or climate change, whatever the more recent day terminology is. It's all based on that supposition that man is causing global warming. And if that's how we want to base our policy, that's fine. It's, I'll give you an example, the first time I can recall it is when we had greenhouse gas initiatives on our agenda and, you know, I discussed it at the time and I remember saying, you know, I don't mind voting on something that's going to clean the air, a policy that will clean the air. For instance, if we're going to talk about buying hybrid vehicles for the city's fleets, fine, it's going to clean up the air, all for it. Am I going to base it on climate change? No, I'm not. And so that's why I would like to have the discussion and have presentation to the council, because we had a very flimsy presentation, no disrespect to Mr. Mora, but there wasn't really much there. There was just some citing, if you go back to May of 2007 and read that staff report, there was some loose citing of some things that happened and we were told, we think, basically what Mr. Mora was saying is, we see this going on, we think the state's going to respond with some legislation, which they did, and we need to get ahead of it, and so we did.
And I totally agree with that, Mr. Grocott, but what it really comes down to a lot of these times is these are political debates, these are, these are two sides of the coin debating the politics.
We're a political body.
And we are a political body, but it's not our job of staff to play politics. So we can have these debates as city council members, but for every scientist you put up, I can put up a scientist. We're not going to get anywhere with that. You either believe it or you don't. You either believe in environmental sustainability or you don't. And whichever way you get around to doing it, that's what we're talking about. And I think you see the majority of the council is okay with the way we're going. The majority of the council agrees with the direction this, this city has been going on environmental sustainability.
I'll pass this out anyways, I brought it tonight, good reading, enjoy it, there's some extra copies, go down to the city clerk and pass it out to staff.
Okay, so we can move on to your next objective item, if you have it, Mr. Grocott?
The next item?
Yeah, do you have another one you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay.
That's it.
So do any other council members have anything they'd like to tweak or add? Can we have a motion then?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council adopt resolution number 2012-16, guessed right, resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos adopting city of San Carlos strategic plan.
Sir, second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Moving on to item 11B, introduction of ordinance amending chapter 8.16 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, private alarm systems. I was halfway expecting this to be the chief.
I got the assignment tonight.
All right.
Mr. Mayor and council members, what you have before you is a request to consider introduction of an amendment to chapter 8.16 of the municipal code regarding private alarm systems. It's largely a cleanup ordinance. In consultation with the chief, we determined that our existing ordinance, which was enacted in 1998, is obsolete, it doesn't address the way alarms are reported to the city. Before, we had alarm terminals that could directly communicate with the police department, those don't exist anymore, we don't allow them, but we still have the problem of false alarms and the cost to the city. This ordinance is basically set up as an enabling ordinance. We have not studied the fees to determine what an annual alarm fee would be, which is one of the main changes. You'll see that at a future date, once we determine what the cost of administering the program is and the cost of false alarms and how they, how they affect the police resources. You'll have maximum flexibility in that.
Excuse me, just one moment. Are we talking police and fire or just police?
This is, this is just for police false alarms, but we have an exemption for false alarms for fire from this ordinance. There's a separate fee ordinance that, or fee resolution that deals with fire false alarms.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Rubens? Yes, Mr. Olbert?
Just a very quick question, Steph. So my understanding is adopting this will not in and of itself tonight do anything fiscally to anybody, because that, that will follow based on later study.
That's correct.
And we will have a separate opportunity to decide whether or not we agree to adopt fees or change.
But you'll have discretion to set the fees, what the fee study will do is set the maximum amount that you could set for the fee.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So that's what you meant by enable, enabling ordinance?
Yeah, this enables you to, sets the process and enables you to, in the future, set a fee.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to introduce, correct, Mr. Rubens?
That's correct.
Introduction of ordinance amending chapter 8.16 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, private alarm systems.
Sir, second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. And before we adjourn tonight, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Arthur Harmon Royce, that is the father of former mayor Randy Royce. Arthur was born June 13th, 1921, and he died peacefully March 4th, 2012, at his home in South San Francisco in the company of his family. A celebration of his life will be held on Friday, March 16th, at 4:30 at the Bass Cultural Center. So we will adjourn this meeting in honor of Arthur Royce. Everyone, have a good night.